Good to see everybody here. I need to turn my phone off. Need to silence my phone so that thing don't go off. It's good to see you, everybody here, and your interest in county government. And we will open up our meeting. And Vice Chair, Mr. Tatum's going to do the invocation. And Supervisor Laurie Smith will do the pledge to the flag. Let's all stand, please. Him.
Good to see everyone here today. And as we conduct a portion of the county's business, at this time, if you will join me in a word of prayer. Our dear heavenly Father, we come to you today thanking you and praising you for all you do for us, Lord. We especially want to thank you for this time and place that we can come together and conduct the business of the county. Lord, we pray that everything that we say and do will be according to your will and pleasing your sight. And Father, we ask for wisdom in everything that we do and say. And Lord, as we serve the citizens of Franklin County, we always want to put you first and follow your will. In Jesus' most holy and precious name, I pray and ask it all. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Moving on to the agenda, is there any amendments or modifications that you want to do? Everything okay? If not, I'll accept a motion that is approved.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. All right. Today is our work session. So every, we're sort of informal up here, but we have our work session. And during that, we are, when we changed the agenda back at the beginning of the year and try to do things a little bit different. And so with that being said, see, Mr. Sandy has come up. We're ready to do the housing study with West Piedmont Planning District Commissioner, Mr. Sandy.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Kind of got a land use menu for you this afternoon. So I'll introduce Shawn Campbell. He's with the, he's the housing specialist at West Piedmont Regional Housing Commission. They are, or not Regional Housing Commission, but Regional Commission. He has been working with Virginia Tech and Housing Virginia on a regional housing plan for probably the last couple of years, actually. And so we've asked him, they've completed that work now, and we've asked them to come kind of give us an update of where they kind of landed with that study, hit some of the highlights of that study. I think the final report is probably close to 150 pages. So we're not going through 150 pages here tonight, don't worry. But I've asked him to come and hit some of those highlights. And we do, I think we have sent the link on the West Piedmont page to that housing study. And certainly, if anybody wants a hard copy of that, we can certainly print that out for you. What you do have in your packet is a, it's kind of a blue color, I think, is just a very abbreviated version. Yep. That just hits a couple of the highlights there. And then following Shawn, Stephanie will be coming up and kind of give you an update on the comprehensive plan activities to date. I know many of you attended one of the regional meetings that she held around the county. So she'll give you an update on that and kind of some next steps forward there. And then working into the zoning ordinance update and kind of talk about where we are there and some of the next steps with that project. So with that, I'll give the microphone over to Shawn.
Good afternoon.
How are you, sir?
Good.
Good to have you with us.
I will tell you that I would much rather have Steve do this, but. So West Piedmont Planning District Commission partnered with the Virginia Center for Housing Research at Virginia Tech and.
Can you talk into your mic, please?
I'm sorry. And Housing Forward Virginia. Tech was, Virginia Tech was responsible for analyzing all the data. And Housing Forward Virginia, their part of the project was to write the narratives and create the solutions. And we'll discuss the solutions in a minute. Contributors to the study, aside from them, were all of our local governments plus three Realtor associations. We started in February of '22 with staff training. Basically, what that was, was Virginia Tech training our staff to, in the future, go ahead and do updates to the housing study without having to go back to Virginia Tech to update the study. We did listening sessions with the local governments in April of '22. That was where our local governments got the opportunity to get together and tell us these are the issues we see in our localities. That information was important for writing the solutions to strategies and solutions later on in the study to kind of individual, give individual solutions for each county and cover the, told you not to do this, and basically cover what they asked, what they asked us to look into. Common topics that came out of that were workforce housing, housing age, housing equity and aging, housing stock, opportunities for rehabilitation, options for aging in place, the availability of affordable housing, and gaps in availability of housing. Virginia Tech went, then went on to conduct interviews with not-for-profit stakeholders regarding housing, social services workers, teachers, emergency workers, just to get the input from the localities that they see daily. And all of that was incorporated into the study. At the same time, each locality chose the focus of their strategies. Common topics there were really housing conditions and aging manufactured home communities, and ways to promote development through zoning or incentives. Some of the results that came out regionally from the study were basically that 76% of the region's population lives within the four counties. 24% of the households within the region spend more than 30% of their annual, their monthly income on housing. 21,000 of those have an income at less than 80% AMI. Those two, put together, the AMI level and the percentage that they spend on housing puts those people at a high risk of homelessness. It's estimated that about 10,000, 10,000 households in the region are at risk of homelessness. Point in time count that was done in January of, well, this would have been January of '22, I think, showed that there are 100 residents in the region that are experiencing literal homelessness. And the K through 12 school data shows that 221 students within the region are experiencing homelessness. Quite often, that number is closer to the reality than the point in time count, because the point in time count is done one day a year in January when it's cold. And a lot of those homeless people have found a place to stay for the night, found a friend's bed to sleep on that night. So the school data is typically a little more realistic. With the exception of Franklin County, all of our local governments saw similar trends in housing sales, with prices nearly doubling and days on market decreasing by half. The strategies for the region that came out of the land bank study, the question, the problem was large amount of vacant lands, underutilized properties that are holding back development. One of the solutions for that was the establishment of a regional land bank through the PDC. We actually received a grant already from Virginia Housing, and we are in our first stage of a two-stage, two-stage study for the regional land bank. The benefits of that was the land bank could strategically identify, acquire, and position certain properties for redevelopment. It would avoid duplicative efforts between local governments and the PDC, and would create efficient use of funds and human resources. Some of the benefits to that are is a land bank can acquire properties, and then the local government can determine the end use. So whether the local government has a focus on low to moderate income housing, or on a specific type of housing development, one fam, two family, I mean, two bedrooms, three bedroom, four bedroom, et cetera, the PDC would be able to make sure that that piece of property would only be available for that. And of course, the local governments would have input on any land in their, in their The other thing that was listed was a coordinated regional effort for home repair and rehabilitation. It's a big problem in all of our local governments, and it's hit or miss as to whether someone can address it, or knows how to address it, or which localities need help. So we're looking to set up a regional program that would address the concerns of rehabilitation of currently owned properties, which would be like a homeowner assistance or a rental assistance type program, or new development. So some of the Franklin County data that I pulled out, I missed one at the bottom of this page, 22,033 households in county, Franklin County. 80% of your populate, or your households own their home, which is actually, I believe, the highest in the region. The counties run pretty comparable between 70 and 80, and the cities drop down to about 31% of your workers commute to Roanoke County, Roanoke, or Salem. And 4,366 households are estimated to be cost burdened in Franklin County. So again, that's 30% or more of their income is going to housing. 48% of those are what they call severely cost burdened, and they're using, they're spending more than 50% of their housing. The biggest issue there is quite often, they're forced to decide between medical care, food, clothing, education, to pay their rental mortgages that month. Franklin County reported 11 schoolchildren who were experiencing homelessness. 67% of the households in Franklin County are comprised of one or two individuals, not a family, not either a single, a couple, or a lot of that comes from your senior population. 27% of your households have one child, one or more children under 18. And the majority of households in Franklin County have at least one person that's 65 or plus in it. The majority of single earners in the top 10 professions in Franklin County are unable to afford homeownership. The exception to that is tractor-trailer drivers, farmers, and agricultural managers. And those agricultural managers, that's lumped in with farmers as one occupation. If you double that up and you have a two-family, you're looking at a two-family household or a two-person household, carpenters, team assemblers, and office clerks can afford to purchase a home together. But that still left five categories that just basically cannot purchase a home, whether it's one person or two persons. And any of this, if you read in the big study, it gives you a whole lot more information on it. Less than 2% of housing units are available for rent or sale in Franklin County, which I'm sure you guys know. From 2014 to 2021, the median sale price in the county was 100, started at 198,000 and has gone up to 321,000. In the same period of time, your days on market went from 108 days to 7.5. Your housing stock here is primarily two- and three-bedroom units, and we'll get a little, well, I think I go right into that now. Market tightness is a significant factor in Franklin County. With decreasing, decreasing median days on market and increasing prices, it indicates a highly competitive real estate market. The tight market poses challenges such as limited availability of both housing, housing units for both renters and owners. The market vacancy rate is very, relatively low in Franklin County, which is unusual. A lot of our localities show a high, high vacancy rate. And given construction trends in the industry, the county will need to streamline a process for developers. This is one suggestion out of them. And I believe you are doing all this now with your comp plan and your focus on the housing section of your comp plan. And one of the solutions that they put out is looking at your zoning ordinance to see if, what can be done to, to make it more amenable for housing development and keeping your costs down. Because one thing that all of our counties, and even Franklin County, need to address is, is that low to moderate income level of housing availability. So when it came to the strategy section, and these were strategies that were picked by the team from Franklin County, one was the upcoming comprehensive plan and how to use it as an opportunity to address housing challenges. And the, I am just bullet pointing the solutions, because the, of the four strategies, there are 13 pages of writing for the solutions for Franklin, for just Franklin County. Access, to assess best, to access zoning practice, best zoning practices, professional development, research and best practices, and comprehensive, and the comprehensive planning process. That was the response to that. Another was, that came up was, housing developers are not developing lower-cost housing in the county, how to address that. And this goes back to creating a suite of development incentives to spur low-cost housing development in the county. Smith Mountain Lake is facing pressures from short-term rentals. The response there, I think, was to examine and update short-term rental regulations to effectively balance tourism and housing needs. And I believe that's something else that we've talked about with the county a couple of times. Aging and manufactured home communities face major housing quality challenges and redevelopment The response to that was promote nonprofit acquisition and other ways to stabilize and revitalize manufactured home parks. Not long after the study came out, a grant opportunity came out through HUD, which I have never seen before. They have a price grant out right now, which came from the infrastructure bill, which is focused solely on manufactured home parks. We're currently, we actually have just completed our application, and it's in its community review stage, I guess. We've been working with Steve on that. The county has been very responsive to information we've asked for. We are applying for $13 million. About 12.2 of that will go to the actual infrastructure, rehabilitation of trailers, replacement of trailers that, manufactured homes, sorry, that can't be revitalized. We do have the option to do replacement on those. Infrastructure can be anything from hooking parks up that have sewer and, I mean, have septic and well water, onto public water if it's available there, lighting, paving, replacing well pumps, replacing water systems within it, and septic systems within the parks. It basically covers anything, just about anything you could think of doing. So that is something we're hopeful for to get. We do have a lot of support from our two senators and housing, Virginia Housing's written us a letter, DHCD's written us a letter of support. So we're hoping that that'll be, we'll know in October. And that kind of summarizes basically what.
Anybody got any questions?
If anybody has any questions.
Rashawn.
Go ahead, Laurie.
Did you?
Ms. Smith.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for your overview. I'll be one of those ones reading the 150 pages.
It's 170, actually. Steve was a little off.
So a couple of questions. You had touched on the rehabilitation programming for homes. Is this part of Section 8 funding, or is this independent of Section 8?
The funding that we're going to look at, and this is, I'll be honest, this, this came out in March, and this is something we've kind of been kicking around a little bit. We haven't really even started laying out an actual plan of, of our resources that we could go to. And part of that was, that was where we were going to start, but the, the price grant came up, and that had a deadline. So we went that way. But no, more than likely, it would not be Section 8 funding. There may be HUD, CBDG funds involved or home funds. And we're looking, we're also going to start looking at some resources for that.
But those funds are very restricted, obviously, you know, Section 8. So I was wondering if you were planning on having more latitude with screening people and?
We, we can devise a program that handles both, that deals with both. We're looking for some funding that is not tied to the federal government. The PDC is actually part of the PDC Development Grant, which is the grant I've been working with for over two years now. That was, that came out for development purposes, for new housing. But we chose to use some of it for revolving loans. So we made a loan, had 0% interest to a builder or a not-for-profit. They built the house, that money came back when it sold. That is starting to accumulate to the PDC and become a, or will start, we're expecting our first ones back. That'll all go into a development account. That a development account won't be earmarked for anything specific, just housing. So that's a place that we're hoping to have some leeway and be able to, to address issues that we can't with, with federal funding.
So with respect to the different housing types that you mentioned, were tiny homes in the conversation?
Tiny homes specifically weren't in the conversation, but there is a section, and I think it's, I know it's in the regional version, and I think if you look through the county, the Franklin County version, Stephen mentioned it there, that smaller housing, which I would consider to take the tiny homes into, is definitely in need. Because that'll address not only these, a lot of these one, one-person households, a lot of that, especially in the county, because there's a demand for housing, is kind of attributed to seniors staying in a house with three bedrooms that they've had forever, because they don't have an option. And we've seen, they've seen a lot in other places where you give them an option, and they will, they'll sell their house, moving to something that's smaller, more efficient, and that puts another house on the market.
Just one last question. With regard to when you all have, during your process, studied and talked to developers, I guess I'm, I'm assuming you all surveyed developers.
Yep.
So you've mentioned, you know, suggestions about, you know, looking at our zoning code and making sure that we're being business friendly and we're being appropriate. Did anything along the lines of incentivization and infrastructure costs come up?
Infrastructure costs came up in many conversations, and it comes in an almost kind of free conversation I have. I guess I was fortunate to present at the Virginia Housing Board meeting, which was held in Danville, to an offsite meeting. And that was something I pushed hard with them, was infrastructure funding. The PDC is actually supporting some legislation that, I guess, it came out of the meeting we had at the PDC. Each local government was there, Steve was there. And one of our local governments brought up the fact that if we could get a mile of road, and a mile of road meaning infrastructure with water, electric, sewer, that we could develop a whole lot more. There is a piece of legislation that we're hoping to see go forward that basically addresses that for rural communities.
Is that outside of VDOT or part of rural roads?
That's outside of VDOT.
Good, God bless you.
So.
Okay. That's all I have.
We are trying.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Please.
I was doing some research on affordable housing, and I was looking at the manufactured home option. And I understand that the manufactured homes must come with a metal frame, and legally, that metal frame must stay with the manufactured home. But there's currently some discussion, I'm not sure if it's at a federal level, about removing that requirement, so the manufactured home could actually be installed on a more conventional foundation. And that becomes interesting, because the, this requirement to keep the frame under the house makes these manufactured homes really unattractive for a variety of reasons. So I was wondering, so that's the background, but my question, are you aware of that requirement? Are you aware of the move to try to change that legislation? Do you have the ability to influence that legislation? What do you know about it?
Well, I know you're absolutely correct, for one. And one thing that's been, and this doesn't directly answer your question, but to put this in there, one thing that has been done is that when new manufactured homes are installed, they can be converted from title to real property. And the advantage to that is that once it becomes real property, the, most of the lenders consider it real property, and you no longer have that problem getting a mortgage on either a new trailer or one that's being resold that was converted to real property. It's the same as, you know, purchasing a modular home instead of a manufactured. I don't, I, I understand that you can't. I don't, I haven't heard anything about being able to remove it from the frame. I would think that that would take you immediately out of the manufactured home and into the modular home world. Because the only difference in a lot of these new modular homes, and you guys have Fleetwood right in the backyard here, a lot of these manufactured homes that come off the lot aren't any different than a modular home. I've been up to, over to Nationwide, looking at how they build, and I've looked at Fleetwood's build, and the only difference is, is that Nationwide takes them off the frame and they're modular. The biggest difference, though, that you're going to come into, that may raise the cost if they do that, is again, the federal government then. Because right now, manufactured homes are all inspected by the federal government. And the local governments, other than saying, "We don't do any manufactured homes in this area," really have no choice but to accept them. Whereas modular homes are inspected by the state of Virginia.
So there, apparently, there are five words in the legislation, and they're trying to determine whether they could take out those five words, and those five words would then enable you to not have that base under the manufactured home, so.
I just, I haven't, I haven't heard any, this is the first, and I'm going to look into it as soon as I get back now.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell, for your time. Appreciate it.
Absolutely, thank you.
Have a good day, sir.
You too.
Ms. Stephanie. How are you today?
I'm good, how are you?
Fine. Apologize for not being there.
Oh, it's okay.
At your meeting, but things weren't working out very well there.
Oh, sure. I missed two myself when I got sick, so give and take. We had good turnout for the most part, for some of them. Some we did not. But overall, we had 69 public workshop participants, which could be better, but it could be worse. So for context, Lynchburg is doing their comprehensive plan now. Granted, it's a city, I want to say they have 70,000 people, maybe give or take. They had about 25 workshop participants, and we have had about the same amount of survey responses. So in some respects, we're doing just fine. All right, we're going to talk about the comprehensive plan first, before I just jump into that. And then afterwards, we're going to spend a little bit more time talking about the zoning ordinance. But first, I'm going to touch on a lot of the information that you've been getting in memos recently, just kind of going over the progress that we're making on the comprehensive plan, where we're at, what we finished up, and what we have coming up next. So to this point today, or yesterday, we've done a few things. We've had a survey online since April 9th. As of yesterday morning, we had 271 responses, which in a county of 55,000 seems low. Again, it could be better, but it also. which in a county of 55,000 seems low. Again, it could be better, but it also could be a lot worse. I'm not upset at that number. It's a good enough number to get a consensus of what the community is thinking. We have that still open. We've started compiling results from the survey and the workshops, but it's still open, it's still on the website. If you go home tonight, if your neighbors say, "Oh, my gosh, I forgot. It's been on my calendar for 10 days and I haven't done it", we'll keep it open, but we don't expect, you know, if we keep it open another two weeks, that the results will skew too much. So we'll start compiling it as is now, but of course, we'll keep that channel open. We also have built a website, which has been open a similar amount of time. This will span the lifetime of the update. It will be up and running probably a few months after we finish, just so folks know where to go and find this information. If everyone has a couple of minutes, I can run through this, and I can show you the website that we have if you're interested in looking at it. If you're not, we'll skip through it. But if you're curious, what is on this website? It's sort of a landing page that just goes over what a comprehensive plan is, what the update is, a general schedule, and then it has a few tabs. One has the history of comprehensive planning, so someone can go to that tab and look at all of the comprehensive plans that we've had. Our first one was 1975. We had one in 85, 95, 2007, and then now our new one that we're working on. There's also a tab where they can go to learn about all of the public engagement activities and opportunities. That's where the survey lives. When we had our public workshops, that's where you could go to learn when they were. When we get to the end of the process and hold one or two open houses, that will also be on there. And then lastly, we have an FAQ page where someone can go and read, "What is a comprehensive plan? What's the point of it? Who uses it? How can you get involved?" So a lot of good information on there. I will give one disclaimer. I had good intentions. It's a separate website from the county. The county website that we have, that we all use for all the departments, it's a little bit limited in what you can do with that, so we built one separately, but it is linked on the county website. So if they, if a resident will go to the planning page on the county website, click "Comp Plan", it's right there front and center. So it's a little bit of a path to get there, but it provides a lot more information than would otherwise be available. Up to this point, we've also completed all seven workshops. We had one in each district. Like I said, we had about 70 people. The most well-attended was Blackwater District, so good job getting the word out. We advertised those in a variety of ways. We had a newspaper article ran. We had newspaper ads, just like we do for any public hearing, that sort of thing. We put it on social media, on the county's social media quite frequently. We had it on the county website, this specific comprehensive plan website. We, of course, had you all spread the word, Planning Commissioners spread the word, neighborhood word of mouth, and then we had a few paper flyers in the Essex Center, the libraries, the Franklin Center here in the building, coffee shop around town, that sort of thing. And then so far, we've held two work sessions with Planning Commission. Those have been pretty preliminary to talk about the schedule, the process, what to expect, and visioning was a big one. Each comprehensive plan has a vision statement. It really sets the tone for the plan. It sets the policy, so everything that you write in there ties back to that vision. So we've gone through that with them. Our next work session is June 5th, where we will review a draft vision statement, get some themes going for the plan, and go over public engagement. Currently in progress or coming up, we're still gathering data, so a lot of what Sean just talked about, what's our housing like? How many units do we have? How are people living? How much are they paying? Where do they work? How do they get to work? What industry are they in? How educated are they? Where are their children going to school? We look at all of those data points. So we're gonna continue to do that. That's something that you do a lot on the front end, but you also do it as you're writing the chapters. You may wanna zero in on one specific thing or element. Maybe a good one is agriculture. For the agriculture chapter, maybe we'll look at a history of farms and how they changed or evolved over time. Up next, we're also going to review Chapter 2 with the Planning Commission, so that's the chapter we're working on now in earnest. This is that snapshot of demographics. Again, who's living here? What are they making? Where are they going? Where are they moving from? And creating a vision statement or a direction for the plan. We will also be compiling public engagement results. You'll be getting a memo, hopefully in the coming weeks, that just says, "This is what we heard. These are the patterns that came forward. This is the consensus. This is what we heard the most. Here are a few one-off things that we heard, but may be of value." So it'll probably be a pretty long document, but we'll put all the juicy stuff in the front. So if you just want the highlights, it'll be there. But in the coming weeks, we'll get that to you. And then also something we've been doing, which is not done too often, so I'm proud of us for making an effort. We've, as part of public engagement, it's of course a community-driven plan. It's what the community wants, needs, sees as an issue or an opportunity. But a lot of knowledge lives in this building and with the people that work here. So what we've been doing is interviewing staff. We've interviewed so far Parks and Recreation, the libraries, tourism, public safety. I think that's everyone so far. We'll get to general properties, hopefully. GIS, economic development, and public work soon. And what we're getting there is, what issues are you seeing right now? What plans do you have for the department in the next 10 to 20 years? What needs do you have? A lot of the information that you all hear year to year, particularly at budget time. But we just think this is important to complement that community voice that we hear. So you'll also get some reports on those. And then lastly, we're working with Roanoke Valley Allegheny Regional Commission and West Piedmont Planning District Commission. They're helping us gather data, write some narratives in some chapters. We're really at the helm of this, but they're a huge support. We're doing this more or less all in-house, which is quite a big effort to do with no consultant, so they've been a tremendous support system for us. We are closing out Phase 1, so all of that data collection, all of that public engagement, which a few loose ends to tie up, that is more or less Phase 1. We're wrapping that up now. And then the longest phase, the biggest of all, is Phase 2, and that's where we really get back there and start writing out the plan, working with the Planning Commission monthly to go over those chapters. That will basically be from June through October, if all goes to schedule. It could go a little bit further than that, but that's more or less the chunk of time. And then we're hoping to get this wrapped up into the adoption phase in winter. Any questions about the schedule, what we've completed so far, what's coming up, what we've heard?
Stephanie, when do you anticipate that you'll have a draft document prior to adoption?
We're hoping for, let me do the math in my head, if we have our last work session in October, I would say a full draft in late October, probably early November, is when it would go to open house, one or two times, three times, however much we feel is necessary. And that would be not like the workshops. That would be where you would, the public could come and react to something. The plan would be there. We would have a presentation, go over the highlights of the plan, get some feedback. Did we hear you? Did we hear you wrong? Is this the direction that we all, you know, thought we were going? Then we'll refine that as appropriate and as necessary. And then we'll take it to Planning Commission hearing in December, and then to the board in January, if, again, everything goes to plan. So the full document, hopefully it won't be hundreds of pages, but we're at 52 so far, and we're only on two chapters. That will be in October, late October sometime.
So, Mr. Chairman, I would request that the board consider that we ask Mr. Whitlow for, to have a work session and some dedicated time on the draft when it becomes available, rather than just waiting until we get it in front of us for adoption. This is a big deal. I have voiced to staff that I'm concerned that we don't have a consultant on board because of resource capacity. And this is a hugely important document. And Stephanie, my hats off to you and staff for tackling this, but I'm worried about it for that reason.
We'll do our very best.
I know you will.
So far, I hope it's been good so far.
I know you will, and I appreciate that.
We'll take all the time. If we have to postpone it to that point, I will have no qualms about coming to you and saying, "We can't rush it. We need another month. We need another two months." It shouldn't affect the zoning ordinance work. We won't rush it if it feels wrong, but we'll try to keep it moving. Luckily, I was doing just this exact thing on a very expedited timeline before I got here. So I still have a little bit of those consulting skill sets.
Oh, sure.
In my toolbox. But, you know, daily things come up, transportation comes up, VDOT happens, you know, so on and so forth. But, well, so far, our heads are on straight.
Thank you.
We'll try to keep them that way.
The only, I don't have a question, it's just a comment that I liked your schedule, your timeline, but I don't have to take as, we need to take as much time as we need. It's good to have that, but if it takes six more months, so be it.
It sounds good to me. And if you all get, if you are getting word, if the rumor mill is swirling, if you're reviewing the documents, if your Planning Commissioners are coming to you and saying, "Whoa, this seems like it's going too fast. We're not being heard", you will not hurt our feelings. Please tell us that we need to go back and revisit something. But we won't, we won't push it through any faster than it needs to be. But also, we do know that things can kind of get off the rails quickly. So we'll try to keep momentum as best we can, but we will not sacrifice anything. We will try our very best.
So Stephanie, just one extra question. The Planning Commission work sessions, are they going to be during their monthly, regular monthly meetings?
Some have been, but moving forward, they're on a separate night, for the most part. And we can get, if you don't mind, to pull the dates. For the most part, I wanna say with the exception of one or two, maybe around July 4th, or July 4th, that sort of thing, they're the Wednesday before their regular meeting.
Can you get us the schedule?
Yes. And I might have put it in a memo to you recently, but I'll look and see. I'll look and see.
Thank you.
And another thing to note about that for yourselves, but also anyone that's asking, what we're doing, our upcoming work session is the one anomaly, because we just ran out of time. We're gonna try to get all of the materials ready, two weeks in advance. They'll be on this website. Actually, do we all have just two minutes and I can show you? Well, never mind. If you go to this website, I will, we'll get it out to you. We'll somehow send you an email. If you go to this website and you go to the Documents tab, every single work session, it's just a button that you click, and it's colored versus grayed. I tried to make it as accessible as possible, so it's just human nature to click it. All of the materials will be there before the work session. So when the Planning Commission gets their packets delivered, they're going onto the website. So you all can be reviewing them, the public can be reviewing them at the same time as the Planning Commission. And that's so to your point, Ms. Smith, we don't get to the end, and everyone says, "This is 1,000 pages and I don't have time to read it." So everyone has time to kind of wrap their head around it as we're going.
Thank you, Stephanie.
Any other questions?
You want to? Thank you.
All right, moving on to the zoning ordinance. So before we get into the work session material itself, I wanna touch on our January meeting, which I think is the last time we met about this, and just go over some highlights so everyone remembers our conversation, where we kind of left off and what got us to here tonight. So back in January, which I think it was January, it could have been February, we discussed the need for new zoning ordinance. Our zoning ordinance was adopted in 1988. It has not been comprehensively rewritten, ever. We've had amendments to it, so for short-term rentals, solar, maybe duplexes. One thing here or there has amended it, so it has changed over time. But we have not taken it, for lack of a better description, as I always use, taken the whole document and thrown it in the trash and started over. And sometimes you need to do that. You need to just take what you have and start from scratch, especially when something is quite outdated, as ours is. I feel bad saying that, but it's also the truth. It's not modern at all. It doesn't follow a lot of modern practices for how zoning ordinances should lay out. But even the content within them, we have a lot of code references that aren't updated or up to code now. So we are certainly in need of one. We talked also about how this is an implementation tool of the comprehensive plan and the village plans. Those village plans and the comprehensive plan set the policy, the idea. The zoning ordinance is one of many tools to try and make that happen. We have four village plans, as you all know. One is brand new, one has just been updated. The other two have come in the last handful of years, but yet we're working with a zoning ordinance that doesn't align with those village plans in their entirety and not the comprehensive plan. We also discussed the potential changes and what this effort will focus on. This is about the ordinance itself, so that means text. When we say zoning, of course, we all know that to be physically how my land is used, what it's zoned, but also what the ordinance reads. This effort is only about the text itself, so this won't be mapping, it won't be the boundary. It's just the actual ordinance text. We'll also go over, before we move too much further, I'll go over a list of those potential changes that we discussed before. When we get there, that doesn't mean all of those will be brought up or part of the work, but I would say most likely. We also had board consensus to go through the cooperative procurement route versus going out to RFP, which just means we don't have to go through the RFP process. We can piggyback on another locality that went through that rigorous process, and then we get to jump right into contract. And that would be with Berkeley Group, who works throughout the state of Virginia. They are doing Rocky Mountains ordinance right now, closing that up. They're doing several comprehensive plans throughout the region. Any questions about what we spoke about the last time we had this?
I have one question, if I may, Mr. Chair. Stephanie, on the, let's see here, the boundary, you know, that this is text, not zoning. We've already talked about zoning boundary adjustments. Is that gonna be part of this discussion?
Not that we've been directed. So unless the board comes to us and says, "We're ready to change the boundary", this gray line.
Because you know that's come up with the village discussion.
That's the DGA boundary.
It is a DGA boundary, right.
And then on top of that DGA boundary, there's a smaller overlay boundary. That could be changed a little bit more easily. That, I would still say it's a separate process. Like, maybe that happens in-house or as a separate task after the text portion is done. But this boundary, you know, what's zoned and what's not zoned, we have not heard that that's the direction that we're going. But more importantly, it won't change something, how we change the text will not change something from A1 to B1, or M2 to R1. That's a separate process.
All right, let me ask you this, for clarification.
Yes.
One of my main problems with our zoning ordinance, and I'm gonna give an example of A1 with buy right and special uses, that needs to be very cleaned up. Is that gonna take place during this process?
Partially, and stay with me, because I know I'm probably confusing you or being frustrating. In a way, so if you look at this list of potential changes, a way to get to that as a starting point is instead of just having one A1 district, we might need several agriculture districts. We might need an A1, A2, and an A3, or I live in Roanoke County, we have an AR where I live. So that's the first step to try and tackle that problem. But if we're talking about subdivisions that are truly residential, that are zoned A1, that will not change until the zoning of the parcels themselves are changed.
Understood.
That can happen now. I mean, that can happen at any time. A few subdivisions have done that. So in a way, it will. If we create language for more zoning districts, it may get to that. But, and this is where I'm probably gonna be frustrating, even if we write it, and let's take, let's pretend that this is a neighborhood, okay? And it's, they're all individually zoned A1. Even if we create a new district that's A2 or A3 that better fits something, they're still A1 until they're changed. But if we add in language for new districts or more, a better variety, there's a more appropriate place to change it to. There's something better to go to, but you still have to go through that process of changing it.
Yeah, because my understanding from when this board had earlier conversations about this, which caused some concern in the community, especially our ag community, the fact that, you know, if you've got a current zoning of A1, we're not gonna come in. If we create four A categories, four agricultural categories, it doesn't mean you're gonna get shifted into one of them by exercise of the adoption.
Correct.
It would take place upon transfer of the property.
No.
No?
No. So if you, let's, we'll use you and I as an example, okay? If I own a lot up in Westlake, okay, and I've lived there for 20 years, and it's zoned A1, regardless of what this ordinance says, regardless of what the map says, if I sell it, there is no, nothing that can change. no, nothing that can change it, change its zoning, just because you sold the property. That could never happen from state code, you have to go through public hearings, it has to be posted, there has to be a, there's a process that it has to follow, and the sale of property between two people would never constitute the process to change something zoning.
So why are we going to be looking at changing categories, which I'm in full support of, but if, if our current zoning is not going to change, why do it?
Well, that's going to have to be a step two. So that, my, my suggestion, as, as a step one, is to change the text that we have, because it's really the, the, it's not the only problem, but it affects a lot more than some, I shouldn't say miszoned, but over time, they've just become miszoned properties. There are two projects, in my eyes, there are two projects, they're two very different animals, they're approached two very different ways, one is mapping, one is text, one follows Code of Virginia requirements, the other is really what we decide, this property is owned, this, that, or the other. Whereas with code, the text, we can't write certain things any way we want to. Let's take code enforcement as one example. We have to write that the way that code lets us write it. So there are two separate processes for a lot of reasons. So I would say this first, then, once you get all of your new zoning districts, you get the language the way that you want it, A1, this is allowed, this isn't allowed, these are the setbacks, A2, this is allowed, this isn't allowed, these are the setbacks. Once you get that, then you say, all right, we're worn out, but now we'll go to the map, and we'll say, what needs to be rezoned, if anything, or, a lot of people leave it up to the community. Then, once your new zoning ordinance is in place, if you're living on a big lot in the middle of a residential neighborhood that's zoned A1, but you want to, for some reason, to go to a new A2 district, if we have that, you would then come and rezone your property, just like people do now. So it's, whether it's resident-driven, property-owner-driven, or board direction, it's still a separate process.
So the county could, would essentially be taxed, if you will, with doing rezonings, according to what a new map would look like?
If you wanted to change the districts. If not, it would just happen naturally over time. If someone knew, oh, okay, we have a new zoning ordinance, we have three new agriculture districts, one is more, it's more like residential, but I get to have a couple of cows, okay? You could come in and say, great, that better aligns with what I want, and it better aligns with my neighborhood, so we're all going to come in and rezone, just like people do now. But yes, it's a big undertaking.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm sorry to.
That's okay. Are we clear? I mean, does that help?
Yeah, well, you raised some questions for me.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Stephanie, we, a while back, we voted on a special use permit, and it was a big A1 in the middle of a residential section. So I'm trying to claw through what Lori's talking about here. And where, what I'm gathering is, even if we go through and do this, do this whole zoning rewrite, that property is still going to be A1, as long as that person wants it to be A1, whether they sell it, no matter what we say about it, it's going to be A1 until whoever owns that property decides they don't want it to be that anymore.
Or the governing body. So, so a property can be rezoned by, by basically two people, the locality, whether that's staff, which would be directed by you, so we'll just say the Board of Supervisors, or the property owner. Those are the only two ways that any property can be rezoned.
So don't.
That'd confuse you more.
No.
No.
Okay.
I find this interesting conversation, and I think, I think, and I'd like for the rest of the board to chime in here, I think we're at a point, we need to slow this thing up.
Okay.
And I say it because of this. I want, I want, I want you to do a class and, and get, and school us, because of what we just learned, what you just said. I'd like to know more about what these terms are, and where our parameters are, and all of that. I, for one, am, am learning that I don't think I know as much about this as, as I think I do.
Okay.
And I, I think, I think we need to slow this thing down, and you, you give us a class on what, on all these zonings, and before we, we jump into something here, and it's still over our head that we don't know what we're doing about. How about the rest of you guys? How do y'all feel? Huh?
My question is, what does that process look like?
To rezone?
That's exactly why we need the class.
Yeah, that's what I, what is it?
So I, I, I'll say from my experience, in, since I've been doing this, I've never worked with a locality where we have gone in solely to, to rezone mass amounts of property. Where we're, let me simplify, let me just bring it back. I've never gone in, and someone has said, here's our zoning map, change it. Change the way that things are zoned. Never has that happened. I don't know if Steve has seen that, maybe Chris, before he was here, I don't know if Lisa has seen it. It's not something that happens too often, and I can't tell you why, I can tell you anecdotally, it's contentious for, you know, a board to come in and say, everybody's being zoned differently, here's what we're doing. But on the same, on the same conversation, some folks might appreciate that. It takes the burden off of them. Change is hard, I mean, zoning, zoning classifications, so colors on a map, it's the easiest way to explain that, colors on a map are not often changed all at once. It is not often that you scoop them all up and say, all of these are going to be blue now, and they used to be red. It just doesn't happen often unless it's warranted by something. An example would be the business park. If you're putting in a business park, of course, you would zone that differently. If you're putting in, maybe, maybe if a locality is in housing development, they have a land bank, they have money set aside, they're in the business of developing housing, and they own property that they want to develop, maybe, maybe that's something that the county would then go in and sort of rezone. But in my experience, it is, it's not often done where, on either end, community or locality will come in mass amounts and rezone something, it's something that happens over time, because to your point, Mr. Mitchell, it's property owner desire. It's, I bought this, I didn't like the way it was zoned when I bought it, and yay, now I have an opportunity, or, I bought it this way for a reason, I still have an opportunity to change it or not. So all that to say, it's not a bad thing to give people options, but if the, if the board's direction is to change the map, then yes, that's a big work, I mean, that's, that's a lot. But this part still needs to be done, because even if we change that colored map, we take that map and say, all the blues are going to be red now, and the purples are going to be greens, the text is still outdated. The text is still not modern, it's not, it's out of, it's out of alignment with code, we don't have, like, for example, maybe a code reference is out of date, maybe we have something that code requires now that we don't even have in our ordinance, enforcement penalties, maybe they're not the maximum that state code allows. So there are still things about the text that are, I shouldn't, they're bad, you know, they're, they need to be changed regardless of the colors on the map. So this is still important.
An, an example, as, I'll go back to A1, when you look at the byright uses and the special use, permit uses, those are the text considerations, I think, that we'll be getting into, but it's not going to change A1. What, we may have a different selection of agricultural categories with this second step, but the reality is, and you're right, the antiquated nature of our code, and it drives me crazy with A1, the way it's articulated, because we know what the definition of A1 is, is in our code, and my headaches, month in and month out, I've got A1 parcels in the middle of R1 subdivisions. And so, you know, one of my hopes was that we could get that cleared up somehow, some way, but I understand what you're saying, but that is an example of the text being very important.
Well, and to, to go back to your point, Mr. Thompson, I'm happy to put together a class if that would help, but.
How, how long, how long do you need to do that?
Um, I mean, I think in afternoon, couple of hours, or how long to prepare?
Yes.
We could do it, I mean, next month or July.
June or July, I don't want to, I don't, because I think this is what's going on, things are getting rushed, and there's a lot of questions, and then we're getting surprised, I mean, we've just learned a couple of things already. And so, with that being said, Mr. Carter's got something to say.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I understand about the text, and I think, yeah, that should be rewritten. Me personally, I don't like the ability of this board to have the power at some point in time to go in and change the zoning on somebody's property. I got real heartburn with that.
I do, too. That's why I think we need this class, that we can sit down and we can learn, pick your brain a little bit.
And Mike, that's a comment I wanted to make, that, and that summed it up for me, I, I understand. Now, I agree that it needs to be rewritten, but I won't take part in going in and dabbling. If it's somebody has it zoned the way they want it, and that's where they are, that's how it should stay.
That's their.
So you, you answered my question, Stephanie, I understand.
I agree 100%.
I don't like messing with people's property rights at all.
I will say, like I said, it doesn't happen often, and, and I'm, I have not seen this, I'm not suggesting it, it's just, you asked to prick my brain, and so it's operating. I think some ways that maybe other localities might have this issue, and they might try to fix it, one idea is instead of maybe the locality coming in and saying, all right, all of these are being changed, maybe you loosen how it's rezoned, you lessen the fee, you shorten the timeline, you incentivize a property owner to go and do it themselves, and then you don't have to do it. Someone still has to. So, for better or worse, no one can do it overnight, no one can do it without notice, no one can do it through a sale, it will always follow the advertisement, application, advertisement, public hearing, no matter what, period, end of story, always. Now, the, to going back to, to pausing and holding another work session to answer more questions, and then picking back up, I will touch on, just the text part alone is about a two-year process. I haven't gotten into this, and I'm happy to, unless you're all really adamant about stopping for now. Part of the scope of work that we have drafted with Berkeley Group, the consultant that we would go under contract with, last meeting, Ms. Smith, you asked about a way to maybe have some help with public engagement, cost share, you asked about the PDC. Not, not the route we would go, we did identify a grant opportunity. It was on your consent agenda last month, maybe the month before. That, that figure, that $20,000 is built into the scope of work. So there are some moving parts to this scope, schedule, that piece of it, that we may want to continue having some conversations tonight about, maybe we keep going with the text portion, but that mapping piece is a separate, they're just running like this. It's two tracks, and they're running at the same time, one's a lot faster than the other, because again, they're still separate. At the end of the day, I think we can all agree, hopefully, the ordinance text that we have is outdated, no matter what the colors on the map are. I think we can all agree that the text needs to be changed. Now, how that we attack or not attack that other piece is a different conversation. So should we go through the schedule and the fee that we had proposed for the text ordinance update, or do you want to press pause and, and come back to this as two projects? Because regardless, they will be two projects, they will, they will not be one.
Chairman, I wanted to remind the board.
Hold, hold, hold.
I'm sorry.
Hold on just a minute, go ahead, finish.
I think, I think that's, it ended.
I just wanted to remind the board that this $20,000 she's talking about, one of my requests, if the board saw fit, is that we make a dedicated effort to engage our communities, the agricultural community, other communities, you know, that we are actually sitting around the table with our constituents, and really discussing this stuff, get it understood, let them ask questions, and let us, you know, garner their feedback in a very direct way. So Stephanie, did I describe what you have gone after?
Yep.
Essentially with this additional money?
So if you look at these colors on here, these yellow boxes, to your point, are all of the, the opportunities for public engagement in this effort alone. So it would be an online survey and paper, if we needed to, public workshops, those would not be tailored to districts, because half of the county is not zoned. So what we would have instead is just two, general, everyone can come, no matter, you know, who you are, where you live, and then focus, focus groups. Those would be people that, and I, disclaimer, I mean this from the best of places, that have an, either intimate familiarity, or a stake in the zoning ordinance, builders, developers, business owners, we all have a stake in it, if you, if you live here, but those folks that have worked with it directly, or are immediately affected by it in one way or another. So that's what that focus group would be for, up to three groups are what we have built in, and those would, would provide a 360 view of what the community is concerned about, that's an opportunity for them to ask questions, what is zoning, is this changing, does this change the way my land is zoned, all of the things we're talking about now. And then, the two things in this purple box right here, that is directly for that $20,000 grant that could go to cover some of this cost. It's a, it's a housing grant, it's through Virginia Housing, again, this was in your consent agenda, but I'll touch on it really quickly. It's to look at barriers to housing development. It's not just about the zoning ordinance, it's about your comprehensive plan, your village plans, your building code, subdivision ordinance, all of the many, many factors that either encourage or inhibit housing development. So these, these two documents, if we were to move forward, and we were to be granted the money, which fingers crossed, it wouldn't touch only on zoning, but we got crafty, and by applying for that grant, at the same time of getting the scope, we're going to be able to take that full $20,000 grant money and put it to this zoning ordinance effort. It'll touch on a little bit more than zoning, but we, again, we tried to get crafty with how we can get a little bit of help paying for this, which, I'm going to jump ahead, since that's what we're doing. The scope that we have worked out with Berkeley Group, if we were to move forward, if we can get to a point tonight, but I'm not rushing you, and I'm not forcing anything, is about 158,000. That's typical. I've seen higher, I've worked on higher myself, in very similar localities, so I, I, I feel like it's a comfortable number, I know it's a lot of money, but that's typically what these things cost, same with comprehensive plans. $20,000 of that would go to this. And right now, we have about 150,000, or exactly 150,000, set aside for this effort, and we have for many years. So, with what we have set aside, and potentially that grant money, we're, we're kind of coming out on top if we were to move forward now, just so you have all of the, the bits and pieces to help you make a decision tonight about either pausing or not pausing, but we've, we've gone in like many circles that are a little bit wiggly.
We've gone in about 14 different directions.
Yes, we have.
Like that happens all the time. I, I want to slow this thing down, stop, slow it up here. I, I, I'm very serious about this. I think we need to, either in June or July, at your convenience, when you can get it together, have another work session for education for this board. I think this is going too fast. It's, I mean, I've done a couple of things already today, and this is serious. This is affecting our citizens, and I, I don't think we need to rush something through. I, I mean, the, the, it concerns me that there was only two in the Boone District, and, and, and I've got to, I've got to reach out. I already reached out, I was expecting some other documentation to the German Baptist community. And so, I want to slow this thing down until we can have a, a class, a work session, either in June or July. You, you tell us. How does the rest of the board feel about that?
I'm good with it. I think the more we know about it, the better decision we can
Exactly. Yeah, I.
I agree. I think the public was pretty apathetic about these public, I had four, but actually, I had more than that, but the mayor and the town manager showed up, and I think it was over their head, so they left, so you didn't count them. But there were very few people at these public, public meetings, so I think I agree with you.
How about the rest of the board? Well, everybody but Ms. Smith, you don't want to.
Oh, whatever the desire of the board is.
Yeah.
I'll support the board.
I was just, we were talking about people attending the meetings, it seems like we're mixing things up, because there was a comprehensive plan review, and that's where the stats were. This is the zoning rewrite, right? Those are two totally different things, and so.
But we're talking about an education for us.
I know.
To know where it's going.
Yeah, but, but it's not, that's not part of the comprehensive plan review, where these public meetings, like two, you mentioned two people were coming. I was just making a distinction between the comp, there were two parts to this presentation, the comprehensive plan review, and this is the zoning rewrite, right? And we were talking about, well, enough people didn't, enough people didn't come to the meeting, well, that meeting was the first presentation, not this one, right? That, that was the point I was making, yeah. And then, the, the only other comment I'd make about the training, it almost seems like you could do, I, I like the training idea, but that could be done. I, I like the training idea, but that could be done in parallel with, um, the work that Stephanie's working on. Uh, because we could be trained while she's going, she has a whole process here, and we would just be better equipped, once we're trained to, to help review her process.
I wouldn't think that she would just stop working on anything else to do that, that that could go on. But I, I do think that it's a consensus of the board, that at your convenience, either in June or July. You, you, you tell staff when you're ready to do it, that we've got to have a, an education.
Okay.
Oh, more of an education on what's going on, the scope.
Do you want to do it on a Thursday, or do you want to hold something separate and do like an afternoon?
Thursday work session.
Thursday work session. Okay. I would say comfortably for everyone, um, knowing how I work, and one thing leads to another in my head. Questions will lead to another question. I would say two or three hours is probably a comfortable spot.
No time restriction.
Okay, okay. As long as everyone's okay with that, okay.
As a matter of fact, if that's the only thing that's on there that day, but we need, we don't, we need to quit this time stuff where everything's rushing and, and everything.
Is June, is there anything on June or July now? Okay, there's a lot on June. Is there anything on July?
Can we change?
Mr. Chairman, we, on, on the regular June meeting, of course, that's not the work session.
No, no, the work session.
Not the work session meeting. We had follow-up from Tuesday's meeting on the stream bank, uh, discussion.
Litigation. We can do those two things, and that'd be enough.
So the stream bank mitigation and the zoning ordinance?
Yes, sir.
And then the other item was, you know, some discussion regarding, um, the MOUs and financing, um, in, in terms of, um,
Maybe we can do that on Tuesday?
We can look at that.
Okay, I have a request of you all.
Can you do it by?
I can, I can do it, but.
If you can't, if, if we need to wait till July, we can. Don't rush yourself.
No, I, I, I think I feel good about it, but I need to know what you need, want to know. Um, I can give you a, a basic 101, um, on zoning, as if I were to go out to, you know, to the community. But if there are specific things that you want to know, please tell me, maybe by a week from now. Um, maybe my next Wednesday or something. You can call me, uh, you can email, whichever one you prefer. If you have something specific, if not, I will do my best to try and read your mind and, and give you all the information that I think would help you. Um, but are we kind of just hoping to learn the difference between text and map, how things change? Um, what limitations we have, like what things code doesn't give us room? Okay, is that sort of the class that we're looking for?
Mr. Chairman, I would just, if I may, um, I think part, Stephanie, that I'm hearing from the board is really the types of considerations um, that the board, what is, what is the menu of considerations that keeps us within scope of going through the zoning rewrite? Um, and then how do, how do the things that are outside of that scope, are they implied in that second phase? Um, but just kind of a connect the dots, if you will, on, on things that we need to have in, uh, input on or should be thinking about to get them incorporated into the discussion.
Okay.
Is that good?
That's part, that's part of it. I like, I want to know the, where the, the parameters are for the, the law.
Okay.
State law versus the Board of Supervisors, not infringing on property owners' rights. Uh, and then what, uh, Ms. Smith was talking about, what Mr. Carter was talking about, and Mr. Mitchell was talking about a while ago. Where we're at with that. The, uh, interpretations, uh, county code, state code, they should be the same on what these different, uh, zoning RFPs, you know, uh, what, not RFPs, but what the, uh, each zone is. The code is, things of that nature, to specify it out where we're at and where we stand. And then we can discuss and talk about that.
Okay.
That's where I, that's where I, that's where I see it going. We're basically saying, everybody's basically saying this.
Do you want to exclude the comp plan and just focus on zoning?
Say that again.
Do you want to exclude, um, Stephanie working on comp plan and just make it zoning, or both?
Well, I think it can be both.
Well, I don't know if the comp plan would be helpful. It might be a little bit confusing, so that's separate, sep-
That'd be a separate thing.
It's a separate project, yeah. We'll, we'll keep going on that. There are two, two different projects, um, two different documents, timelines, outcomes, the whole thing. So I'll keep, we'll keep working on that behind the scenes. We won't pause on that. Um, and then we'll, we'll come back together. Um, is there anyone else up here that, that you're wondering a specific component about zoning that I can, I want to come and, and it be helpful to you?
Have we left out any things, anything?
Okay, one, one thing, um, caveat for myself, so I can protect myself if I don't mean expectation. When we talk about code and what, where we align with Code of Virginia is a rabbit hole. Almost every single piece of our ordinance in one way or another has to align with what code allows us to do. So it might be a little high level, um, and there may just be some examples. One, one example that I hope can help you, um, now, not to get in the weeds, manufactured housing. Code of Virginia says that we have to allow manufactured housing in anything zoned agriculture. That is not an ask. We can't, we can't do anything otherwise. So there are some things like that that are very easy to understand, um, but then there are some that get a little more convoluted, that it would be not even two months, not even if we waited till July, could I go through and see exactly where we're out of alignment? The consultants will be doing that as part of this work anyway. Um, so I can touch high level on, on code alignment and where we are at a very high level. But to do it sort of code section by code section would take six months, probably. Um, but I'll come with something. So if there's something specific, again, that you can go home and think about it, and you can call if there's something.
For exa, for example, what, what I, some in my mind right now. These homeowner associations that's come in here, build these subdivisions, and then they put restrictions, et cetera, et cetera. How is that in agreement with law and where the board is? I mean, I've always, like when we do a, uh, that's one of my questions every time that I ask to Ms. Cooper. Uh, are they homeowner association rules? You sign those.
Mm-hmm.
And how are they in regards to where we're at today and things of that? That's the time stuff to get answered.
Sure. Homeowner, HOA rules are always a separate, um, those are civil. So we, we don't have a say. Let's say that a homeowners association says you can't put a fence in your front yard, okay? But our ordinance says you can, and we don't care how high it is. That person, I'm going to let you fill in the blank. Can they put up a fence and how high?
Well, to me, to me, if they signed the paper saying, when they buy into that, that these are the rules that you're going to go by, then the answer to your question is, no, they can't put up fence.
Exactly. So HOAs are separate, but then, and I'm, then I'll be quiet because I'm just going to confuse you now. Let's take that manufactured A1 thing. If we have A1 zoning, in our ordinance, we cannot say that you can't have a manufactured home. Now, if an HOA comes in and they say that in their rules, there is nothing we can do about that.
To change it.
Uh, to change it.
Correct.
So they'll always be separate. Um, so HOAs can get kind of confusing, but we can only do what we're allowed to do, to the extent that we're allowed to do it, and how those private parties act, um, is for the courts to decide.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
So, so Mr. Chairman, if I, just want to make sure, clarify then, so then at the June 20th, that would be Thursday, the 20th, a couple of work sessions then on the zoning ordinance, um, sorting ordinance class, if you will, zoning 101. Um, and, um, looking at what the state statute, of course, allows and, and, and county and so forth, and then the stream mitigation bank. That being said, I just want to make sure from staff that, um, in, in just clarity from the board, are, are we saying then, until that time, we would not necessarily move forward with the, with the procurement of the consultant um, at, at, at this time, or, or we, or moving forward? Be- because of the grant, I don't know if there's grant parameters, um, the grant application was submitted. I don't know if it's been secured.
We need to move forward.
I don't think that has any effect of what we decided on doing Tuesday.
Oh, please.
Continue to move forward on that.
I just wanted, I just wanted to make sure. I just wanted to make sure.
I don't think that's got nothing to do.
So we are moving forward with the scope, and we're going to hold the class, or we're waiting?
Yes, ma'am, we are.
We are? Excellent. Okay.
We were talking about something totally different.
Okay, okay. So we're moving.
That come from.
So we're moving forward with this. This is what I wanted to close with. We have, we have consensus from you all next month on the consent agenda to bring for you all to vote that we can move forward to go under contract based on the scope of work.
I don't know, but I'm ready to say yes or no on that until the answer.
I think the fundamental scope is going to remain the same. It's how we come at it.
How do we, how do we get to where we're going with it?
Correct.
But the scope is going to be the same.
The scope of work for what we need right now, what we've all agreed that we need, which is the text, is the same, whether it's tonight, six months from now, two months from now.
Correct.
To Ms. Smith's point, if and when you want to tackle that second piece of the map, that's my suggestion would be this right here, August 2026, when you have gotten through this process. I would not try to do them at the same time. We can learn about it now, and of course, just keep it fresh in our minds, but yes. This scope doesn't change anyway, no matter what comes of that class next month, so I'm glad to hear that we can keep going on this and keep the ball rolling.
Yes.
Okay.
Stephanie, do you feel like you've got, um, money from Roanoke-Allegany? Do you need money from Roanoke-Allegany?
Um, uh, it's my opinion, um, and it might be shared. I think that their skill set and their value to us is probably in something less technical than this. Um, if we needed assistance on the public engagement piece, maybe, or the open house. But I think as far as reading code, knowing what's a best practice, knowing what other localities are doing, knowing exactly how to, to benchmark, research what similar localities are doing and what their ordinance is saying.
I know we've got Berkeley. That, that's kind of wrapped up in a boat with me.
So I think, to me, that's enough. I don't know if, if Roanoke Valley, I think we would, we could use them in better ways. Um, if we, if we were trying to do this on our own, then no, of course, we would need help, but.
So those three areas you're talking about, that we're paying that 20K for, for community meetings, you're not including a category for like citizens, like A1 or R1. There's not, there's not going to be sessions?
If you want to change the scope, so right now, what we have, let me get these colors out of your way. The way that we have public engagement sorted now, in this scope of work, it would be that online survey, which everyone could take. We'll, we'll be specific, um, questions, if you've taken the comp plan survey, similar to that, but zoning. We'll have the public workshops where anyone can come, open to the public. Where I think you're getting at is what, what in here is called focus groups.
That's right.
We only have three right now. If one of those needs to be agricultural about A1, then it can be. If you think that we need more than three focus groups, we need to know that tonight, so we can tell Berkeley Group, hey, bump your number up a little bit, so that way when we get to the point of we're under contract and we're ready to plan this out, we have up to four.
That's why I asked if you needed money from Roanoke.
Um.
Because I would like to see a citizen component, whether we say it's just citizens, or whether it's A1, or what, whatever it is. That needs to be part of a focus group. I don't know how the board feels about that.
So I have two thoughts. I agree with you. It could be a focus group and should be. Um, I think we just have to make sure we plan it and invite strategically. The focus groups are invitation. Um, folks that, again, I know I'm not describing it, so I hope no one gets angry at me. Folks that get it a little bit more, or have a stake in it, or have worked with it, um, that can come and bring something to the table, even if they talk to their neighbors. Get a group and then, you know, come and be that voice at that focus group. But my other thing that I'm hesitant about, Berkeley Group or not, Roanoke Valley or not, it's two different methods and approaches into this. So if, if we're going to do that sort of focus group, I think we just ask Berkeley Group to add one on.
That's good.
Because Roanoke Valley may approach it differently, or they may ask questions in a different way. And then you have a different set of data that looks and feels different than all the other sets of data, because it's two different people doing it.
That's perfectly fine. I'm just on that board. I'm vice chair of that board.
Okay.
And, um, I'm trying to kind of get things moved into the rural areas of the footprint. And if there's something that, that, that I can ask of, of that board, I'm happy to do that.
Okay. I don't know if you feel differently, but I would keep it, I think I would keep them on other paths. I don't remember what's in the work program this year.
You're not going to be comparing apples to apples. You're gonna, it's gonna be too mixed up because the demographics of Franklin County are going to be a lot different from Roanoke County or Montgomery County or.
No, and I, I didn't suggest that. I'm looking for money if she needs it for us to broaden.
If they want to give us some money, that's fine.
Yeah, I was looking for money to broaden the, the focus groups.
If they could give us money without, um, doing it, then sure, I don't know why we would say no to that.
I would not ask, I would not ask them to do it.
But, uh, I mean, I don't, it wouldn't hurt. I mean, the more money we have from someone else, the less that comes out of the county's pocket, but if it comes down to yes, we will give you some, if we are the ones that run that focus group, I would advise no.
No, I wouldn't ask her to do that.
But if it's extra money, then sure. Okay. Um, any questions about the money, the cost, certain pieces of this? You want me to go back to the schedule? Okay, I'm going to touch on a couple of pieces about the schedule, and then we will close up. So, once we move forward with this, again, it'll be on your consent agenda next month. We can then go under contract. What this scope of work has laid out is a kickoff of July, so just around the corner, so midsummer. Um, if you see these red circles right here on the screen, these are all the opportunities that you and the planning commission would be together in a room to hear from Berkeley Group at different stages of the process. So the first one would be a kickoff meeting to learn who Berkeley Group is, what the zoning ordinance process is, what you all think needs to be incorporated into that, your concerns, what your constituents say. Um, it's really a true blue kickoff, um, where everyone can come to the table, give their side, ask questions, so everyone feels comfortable moving forward. The second one will be about halfway through, after all of that public engagement. And what you're going to hear from them at this point, again, this is going to be a joint meeting with the planning commission, um, which do not let me leave, and before I ask a follow-up question about that. Um, this will be to hear what they heard of public engagement. We went out to the public. These are the different ways we did it. This is what we heard. This is our direction moving forward. Um, just like the comprehensive plan, it's not as community-driven, because again, we have to comply with code and so on, so forth. Um, but it's still a community vision. This is what we heard from them. This is what we heard from the developers. This is what we heard from the agricultural community. Um, these are the themes. Expect that when you go and you get a new chapter about uses, that's why it's written the way that it is. So that's that piece there. And then the last piece is towards the end, and that's to go over the whole ordinance together as a whole. Um, that is not the first time that you will see or hear or learn about the revisions. I will come up to you periodically. Um, Berkeley Group will prepare memos that, that outline high-level changes, and I will bring them to you, and we'll go over it throughout the process. So you won't get to the end and see a brand-new ordinance in front of you, but that is an opportunity to sit down with, you know, front to back and say, alright, this is our last chance before adoption. Any last, um, questions or concerns? Are there any, um, concerns or questions about holding those three as joint meetings? We have it now because it's a money-saving mechanism. If you want to hold them separately, people do that. Um, it works effectively. I've seen it both ways. We did this again to save a little bit of money. It equates to thousands, so. Any issues withholding those as joint work sessions?
I think it's a good idea to have it with our planning and zoning board, so that everybody's on the same page.
Good, okay.
Everybody shaking their head, yes.
Okay. Um, last couple of things, just because we went over this really brief. It'll be an investigation period, phase one. They'll look at our comprehensive plan. They'll look at that Clarion work that happened a few years ago. They'll look at the village plans. They'll look at the housing studies, um, like you heard from Sean tonight, and get all the economic development strategic plan, if that were to be adopted at that point. Um, the new and old comprehensive plans, for any recommendations um, or, or policy that should be implemented through that zoning ordinance. This phase will also be for public engagement. So it's a lot of data gathering, similar to the comprehensive plan. It's a lot of collecting information. Then, we would go into that housing study piece to, to satisfy the needs of the, um, grant money. And then it'll go into the drafting phase. That's the longest phase. Um, it's basically all of 2025 and a little bit into 2026, and those are bi-monthly work sessions with the planning commission. Well, they will, they'll review article by article, um, more or less line by line, not, not exactly. Um, that would take eons, and we would all, all have gray hair. Um, but they'll go through and essentially take it piece by piece, digest it, ask questions about it, get revisions, that sort of thing. In between those months is when I will be coming to you and saying, this is what the planning commission work session came out of it. This, these are the changes so far, and keep you all aware. And then the last piece is going back to the public and then the adoption phase. So those are the three, four big phases of this process and how it works. Any questions about it?
Uh, just real quickly, Mr. Chairman, are we in consensus to add a-
Uh, just real quickly, Mr. Chairman, are we in consensus to add a, a citizens', um, focus group?
I think so.
So that.
Or do, I, I mean, this involves, this involves the people.
This is about our people.
This is heavy-duty stuff, this, this involves the people and it's, uh, uh, we, we've got to, we've got to, this is their county. I, 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 I think we should.
Thank you.
And it, and it doesn't need to be a handpicked by one or two. I think we need, all of us have to put input into it.
Okay.
Thank you, Stephanie.
You're welcome. Um, just doing some quick numbers in my head, I'm not great at math, but I think we should still be under 160 if we add one more. And again, we have hopefully that 20,000 to go towards this, so we should still come out more or less on top, however you look at it.
I'm the member of the Young Baptist Group.
Anything else?
Got to do that.
I'm happy to come, we're happy to come facilitate something, uh, however.
I've already talked to a couple of people and it's, it's tedious ground. Uh, they'll talk with me, I'm, I'm working on it, I'm trying.
I could also put together, um, more or less like brochures maybe, like what zoning is. I don't want to say pros and cons because then it sounds like I'm feeding an agenda, but something informational that would help you to take them, um, take it out. I could work on something like that. Berkeley Group could also have something that they could offer that you could take, um, to that end, to those folks.
Maybe if you'll get that together and I can take it to this one individual and then see what happens from there.
Sure. Give me a couple of weeks, maybe a month. Okay?
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Madam Clerk is, uh, I've been asked to take a break and, uh,
I don't think so.
We've got two members that's got a conflict here in a few minutes. Let's take about a 15-minute break here, that'll do that.
I don't think so.
And we'll come back and we'll finish whatever what it is. Kevin, if you can hang around, I'm going to need you when it comes to all the matters by supervisors on that, okay? Alright, thank you. We'll take about 15-minute break, however long it takes. All right, let's see, where we at? Mr. Whitlow.
Yes, um, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Um, several upcoming events I'd just like to highlight with the board. Um, some really, as we kick off the summer season, a lot of tourism and activities, uh, certainly now underway and this, um, certainly wish everyone a safe Memorial Day weekend, but this holiday.
Whitlow, can I stop you for just? If you will, before you start into that, we've got two members that's got to leave here in a minute.
Yes, sir.
Let's do that, uh, application for special entertainment permit.
Yes, sir.
Let's do that because that's got to be voted on.
Yes, sir.
And they can, they can do that and then everything else, okay?
Great, great segue, Mr. Chairman. One of those events that I was talking about, summer season, is the Southwest Antique Farm Days. Um, they have submitted their special event application. Uh, all of the applications being completed, all the necessary signatures from the various staff uh, have signed off on that, and so we would need a motion to approve, uh, that application, Mr. Chairman. And that's held on Father's Day weekend each year and, uh, look for a good event. I would also say, Mr. Chairman, um, it kicks off on Friday. Uh, that Friday, I think it's June the 14th, uh, if memory serves me correct. Um, and at 9:00 AM, and certainly they've invited the board to be there and offer any comments, uh, at the Friday, June 14th kickoff at 9:00 AM. But we would need approval of this application, Mr. Chairman.
I'll entertain a motion to approve, uh, to approve or disapprove this. I need a motion in a second.
I make a motion to approve this.
I need a second, second. Madam Clerk, do a roll call on that one.
Supervisor Jamison.
Yes.
Supervisor Mitchell.
Yes.
Supervisor Carter.
Yes.
Supervisor Smith.
Yes.
Supervisor Quinn.
Yes.
Supervisor Tatum.
Yes.
Chairman Thompson.
Yes.
That was the only thing that we had, we had to do action on and, uh, want to get that done before they had to leave, so Whitlow.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Chairman, um, as I was saying, this Memorial Day weekend, there's a Kids Outside Festival, uh, going on at Wade Park on Saturday, uh, May 25th. Uh, I'm reminded, and I'm sure Mr. Tatum may would remind everyone, I think he did, um, last month, that I believe it's Saturday, June the 1st is the Henry Road Yard Sale, uh, there, uh, in the community and, um, uh, for, for that community event. Also, um, the Farm Strong, um, OCR event is being held at Wade Park on that Saturday. Um, following Saturday, June 8th, we can have Court Days in Rocky Mount, and it's also, um, the Day at the Lake with the Smith Mountain Lake Association. Um, so a lot of activities going on around the county, Concerts by Canoe kicks off June 14th and the same weekend as the, um, Southwest Antique Farm Days. And just a host of various events, of course, there's always the, uh, fun enjoyment of Independence Day in the summer at the Rotary Independence Festival at the high school, that's on, uh, June 28th. So appreciate Mr. Kevin Tosh and all of his efforts and Parks and Recreation and, uh, all these tourism activities and events. Uh, this last month, we kicked off the Moonshine Heritage Trail here in Franklin County along with our, uh, cooperative partners with Floyd and Patrick County, and that was a great event, Mr. Tatum, I think, attended that event there at the, um, Blue Ridge Institute and Farm Museum. So look forward to many good things, um, from that going forward. Um, next, um, in the next two or three weeks, there will be a, um, staff is, will be hosting a builders-developers luncheon, um, uh, for the, um, Union Hall Village Plan. Of course, that Union Hall Village Plan was recently adopted and with the investments there in infrastructure and Union Hall with the water system and so forth, uh, there's a lot of interest, uh, there from builders and developers. And so, uh, staff will be hosting that, um, um, there. I, I think, uh, the date looks to be June the 13th, um, that's also coming up here in June. Um, Mr. Chairman, there are several other things and I, uh, if, if I may, I, I see, uh, Mr. Dave Terry there in the back with Ms. Sharon Tuttle, uh, there, um, the school finance staff. And, uh, I know this is Mr. Terry's last, uh, month, if you will, coming up in June. He will retire at the end of June, so I saw in my audi- audience and I'd just like to thank him for all of his support, working with our staff through the years and to congratulate Ms. Tuttle on working with us in the future. One of those, uh, things that we worked on was a grant application, um, and Mr. Carter noted this, uh, during Tuesday's report, a notice of award on a school construction assistance grant. That was stood about of, um, 5,649,000. We do have the official notice, uh, from, from the Department of Education. That is a tremendous grant award, uh, really that we work with Davenport, we would not let that go. We, last year, uh, we did not receive that, we would not let it go. We worked with Davenport and Associates to make sure that we secured that grant. Because what that does, that buys down the amount that we have to borrow for the middle school HVAC and roof replacement. Um, and almost, um, $6 million, uh, that in addition, um, ESER funds $9 million. So as opposed to having to borrow upwards of 28 million, it's likely more in the 14, 15 million dollar range. And so, at a very competitive, um, interest rate. So kudos to, um, the, um, school finance staff, um, Mr. Chairman, as well as the county staff and Mr. Davenport to make sure that, uh, we make that happen. Um, Mr. Chairman, we, we were talking about, um, some other things, um, activities. Um, the Farm Bureau, uh, uh, certainly likes to meet with the county staff every year uh, and the board and host a dinner twice a year now, one in January and one in July. They have requested to do that again in July. Um, and so if that were the case, we would likely, it would be July Thursday, July 18th. Um, if that is a consensus of the board, we don't have to have the consensus today, but we, we likely need to let them know if, if, if that's okay with the board.
The 18th, when the board meeting, the workshop?
We, we would have our work session, but that would be in July and then they would host us at dinner after the work session.
We're already all going to be here that day anyway. That would be good.
Okay, we will.
Okay?
So, okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, we'll follow back up.
Y'all got to go back to that meeting that day, to West Pima.
Won't have to that day, if they have a meeting in July, a lot of times.
So it all depends on how the, the Thursday. Okay. So that'd be good for y'all and everybody can be here.
Great. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, um, I, I think this is just a matter of logistics, but it's really just to make the board aware, um, that next year, not this summer, but next summer, um, beginning on Monday, June the 9th, through the latter part of the summer, through early August, um, Six Mile Post Road Route 640, uh, there will be a culvert replaced, um, there by VDOT. And so there's going to be some detour work. Uh, VDOT is coordinating that with our public safety staff, our Parks and Recreation staff will be affected and others. So, um, VDOT has requested a, a consensus letter, uh, if you will, from, from my office. We've done those in the past, it's, it's, it's the time for the culvert to be replaced. They've done a nice job, uh, trying to work around, um, public schools and so forth to make sure that's done in the summer. So I, just letting the board know, if there's no objection, I'll be sending VDOT a concurrence letter, uh, for that. Um, speaking of concurrence, uh, letters and letters of, uh, support, um, the board may recall, um, a couple of years ago, we submitted a letter of support for a grant application for the town of Bedford, who was seeking federal funds for a new passenger rail station in the town of Bedford. It doesn't necessarily commit any Franklin County funds to the project. Uh, they haven't necessarily asked for Franklin County funds per se. There was a Bedford-Franklin Rail Initiative, uh, a few years ago with the Amtrak, uh, route that runs from Roanoke to DC. Uh, this is just a application from the town of Bedford. Um, if any support letter, if there's no objection, this would just be to support, um, their application, um, for, for, for funding, um, not necessarily requesting any, any funding from Franklin County at this time. Um, and so I will be following up with that if there's no objection. Um, a couple of other things, Mr. Chairman. The Roanoke Valley Juvenile Detention Center, which Franklin County is a part of, uh, the facility is, is going on 25-plus years old and is in need of a new roof and HVAC replacement, not unlike the YMCA and some other aging buildings and so forth. We are members of the Roanoke Valley Juvenile Detention Center. Um, our funds are per diem and that goes to support both the operations of the center, the security and the capital improvements. I'm just making the board aware. Mr. Brian Carter is Chair of the Roanoke Valley Juvenile Detention Commission, does a great job. We just wanted the board to be aware that, um, working with Davenport, the Detention Commission will be borrowing funds for that. Uh, it will not impact this year's budget, maybe n- not even next year's. It could impact future year's budgets on a per diem basis. Um, we don't think that will be significant, but we're just want the board to be aware in case there were any objections of that project moving forward. Um, of course, Mr. Brian Carter mentioned our bond rating, um, upgrade, um, on Tuesday. Very, very pleased with that from Fitch, um, when other localities, I think Supervisor Smith mentioned this on Tuesday. Earlier in the year, Fitch had notified lo- local governments that they were redoing their rating formulas, really with the thought that, um, several localities, um, could likely be downgraded. Um, and some around us have been. Um, we were not, we were upgraded. Um, so kudos to this board for sound fiscal management, continued sound fiscal management, that does help us. Mr. David Rose, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Um, we staff met with, uh, Mr. Rose yesterday as a follow-up to our March, um, one of our March budget work sessions. And if you all recall, Mr. Rose walked the board through some of the capital items that we have on the county, including a new E911 center and other borrowing that we may need to do in the next three to five years. Um, next three years, I should say. So, a project like the 911 center, the DSS offices and so forth, it, whatever that amount may be, that 15 million amount, 20 million amount, whatever the number may be. If you all recall, his recommendation was looking to go through a line of credit before permanent financing because the cost of that is far cheaper, um, with our rating and so forth and our current interest and, and keeping our current balances where they are. And so, um, he would look to be back with our board in August to walk the board through some of that thought and financing, um, and what that may look like. And also we give our board an opportunity prior to that to talk about capital priorities. And, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I'll talk about that a little bit here shortly, uh, as we, as we kind of unpack the budget a little bit. Um, in terms of, um, other, uh, things, Mr. Chairman, I think that covers most of the items that I have, uh, today. Um, the, um, I, I do have on, um, the, the agenda, Mr. Chairman, a budget debrief. I know some board members had expressed, um, uh, an opportunity maybe now that the budget has been approved for us to talk a little bit about maybe process and as we go forward next year, maybe a little bit about our strategic capital priorities. Maybe not necessarily knowing that we may not get to, um, into a lot of detail today, but maybe talk about if there's an opportunity maybe later this summer, uh, if that's August, September, uh, from a strategic priority planning session and so forth from the board. So I thought I would start there. I, I will, um, say that the Commonwealth of Virginia has adopted its budget. Um, it was the Modified Budget Act, uh, that the House of Delegates and the Senate approved. And speaking with the, um, school finance staff, that is, that is encouraging and good news for school systems in Virginia. Uh, it appears our school system, um, will, will, um, it will be favorable, uh, for them and, and for others, as well as us with our comp board, um, uh, compensation, our revenues from the state. And so, uh, Mr. Carter will be back, uh, before the board at your June meeting to appropriate that budget uh, and to finish that budget up. Um, and so as we turn the page from fiscal year '24 that we're in to next year fiscal, uh, year '25, um, we, we thought we would just give the opportunity maybe for the board to have, if you have any thoughts for us, just in speaking with staff, um, as we look to maybe the, the latter part of the summer, early part of the fall, not, not waiting so much until November or December, maybe getting ahead of that a little earlier. Maybe the board's expectations on some priorities and maybe capital and operations. I think it would give the board an opportunity to talk and have more input with the process. I know this year was really, really compressed, certainly for Mr. Marshall Jamison, Mr. Dan Quinn, as you were coming on board right in January in the middle of a historic reassessment. Um, I know that, that was a lot coming at the board, all the board members, Mr. Chairman, all at one time. I applaud the board for making it through that, uh, and all, all the stuff with the Commonwealth of Virginia. And then when the budget, uh, kind of blew up in Richmond and they started back over. So, um, uh, that being said, I'll pause there and there may be, uh, opportunities, Mr. Chairman, or thoughts from the board.
Quinn?
I, I could go first. So, I wanted to comment on the budget review process. And, uh, just to be clear, it's not on the county's preparation of the budget or even on the final budget vote. It's really on that eight-week process and the many meetings that we had during that eight weeks where we, the board, were reviewing the budget. And, uh, I have been through many budgets, always business budgets, you know, ranging from small startups to billion-dollar organizations and, but I wanted to just watch this budget process in, in action and be, well, a participant and observer, but not be suggesting changes midway through until I'd seen the whole cycle. And not, and now I've seen the whole cycle and I, I have a few ideas that I'd like to bring up for consideration. Um, and I really distilled it down to the four, four that were the most important ones for me. And to me, none of these are, uh, rocket science, they're more basic blocking and tackling. And what's also interesting about them is there no inner connectivity. So one's not dependent on another. You could decide I want to do one, but I don't want to do two and oh well, you know, that's how it could work, uh, pretty well. So, so anyway, I'll just, I'll go right into the four. So, so the first is, I believe in the future that the board should manage the school budget process from start to finish. And this year, I feel that we delegated a review and, uh, determination of budget cuts to the county as opposed to managing that process ourselves. And this is a hundred million dollar budget that we're delegating. And I just, I feel it's a massive budget that we, as the board, should take responsibility for. We should be able to review this. And the, um, the county ended up making unilateral cuts to the school budget and, and that recommended cuts. And that should be us. Uh, the board should be students enough of this hundred million dollar budget so we can recommend, um, uh, budget changes. And I think, um, delegating this to the county actually has perverse outcomes. And I, I think it puts Chris and his staff in a bad position. And I'll just give you an example. So there, one of the things that were preserved in the county budget was, um, the healthcare premium increase. And, um, and that's a re- in recognition of Chris's leadership, right? He's a, a good leader, he's taking care of his employees. However, there was really no consideration given to making sure that we followed through on phase two of the school program to pick, to bring the steps in line with the teachers. And so we, we, that's in jeopardy. And I think it was, that was a really important thing that we were trying to restore. I think the excellence in Franklin County starts with excellence in our education system. And unless we, the board, take responsibility for the school budget and we're students of the process and we decide the cuts, I think you're going to end up with teachers just like they are today, many steps behind, exiting our system, and we're not going to have the excellence in education that we want. So that's, that was one, uh, idea one of four. And maybe I'll just roll through them and then we can decide to discuss or not. But number two was, uh, there was really no methodology to consider board supervisor recommendations. And there were a number, uh, everybody here had. And there were, everybody here had some ideas that should have been considered. I'll just bring two up. But Marshall, for example, sticking with the healthcare premium, he recommended that there be a cost share. And I'm not ruling whether that's a good idea or a bad idea. My point is, it wasn't formally considered by the board. And then Lori, just to pick on one other person, had a recommendation that we provide more funds to the Department of Economic Development, because you have a director there who's mired in a lot of admin work without admin support. And again, I'm not ruling on the merits of that idea, I'm just saying, there's no process to, for us to consider those ideas, and either put them in the budget or not. And so what I'm suggesting is you have a process, and it has to be somewhat limited. And these ideas I'm talking about are conceptual. Now, you don't have the details worked out, but I'll just, I'll give you some thoughts. You might limit it to each supervisor has two ideas that they can bring up. And those two ideas could be additions, deletions, changes, maybe it's three. And they have two or three minutes to present their idea, and the merits for their idea, and support their idea, and why this idea should be included in the budget, whatever it is. And then, the other supervisors would have two or three minutes to either support that idea, or criticize the idea. But at the end, you would vote. And if an idea had four votes or more, well, it gets put in. If it's less than four votes, then we don't do anything with it. But at least there's a methodology for considering ideas and a restricted number of ideas. So, anyway, that was the second one. The third is that we would ask the county to perform some analytics on the budget data. And so, to Chris and his staff's credit, he gave us an incredible amount of detail. I mean, every dollar's in there, we could never accuse them of hiding data. It was as transparent as you could be. However, I think that there's some analytics that would have really helped us. And I know certain board members went and did their own analytics. They went through the hundred pages and did a variance analysis, for example. And I'm thinking that we could ask Chris to do some analytics. And I don't see this as being an incredibly time-consuming job. And I'll just give you an example, I'll limit it to two things for next year, but one would be, we'll first split the school budget from the county budget. And right away, when you looked at the two combined, it looked like last year's 183 million proposed, this year's 183 million. It looks like it's a wash, but if you split the two, you realize the total budget for the school went down 13 million, the total budget for the county went up 13 million. Well, right away, it's giving you information that you need. And then, for the county, so the second step would be for the county to have taken that 13 million and showed us the pieces. You lose those pieces when you lose, look across the department. So, for example, a huge piece is capital. And, okay, we would have seen that of the, I'm just making these numbers up, but of the 13 million, well, 5 million is due to capital. We've kicked the ball down the road, or the can down the road, and we've got to pay for capital. And maybe 2 million is salary increases, and 1 million is from the healthcare premium. But at least, it would have given us, the board of supervisors, a roadmap to where we want to look, instead of just having 100 pages of data. And so, these very simple analytics, I think, could help all of the supervisors more quickly look at the data and understand what's going on. And then, the last, so item number four was for the board, each board of supervisor member to have some kind of pot of money that they could pay for county business. And again, this is conceptual, it's not the details, but, and I don't know even what the amount would be, I'll pick 50,000, 25,000, 100,000, but each board member would have this pot of money. And the idea would be that the board members could pay for things that are county business. So, for example, Reba Dillon, on the new trail at the Smith Farm, got the inmates from Sheriff Overton, and she's paying for breakfast and lunch out of her own pocket. To me, that's embarrassing. Reba Dillon shouldn't have to pay, she's getting free labor, and now, out of her own pocket, she's paying breakfast and lunch. And so, I'm thinking, this money could be used for things like that. And we have to carefully construct the rules, and I'm even thinking that each board member would have to bring in a mini proposal, like a one-page, this is what I want to spend some money on and get it approved. But somehow, that we would have some money that we could spend on necessary things within our area. So, anyway, that's the fourth idea. So, I'm done. So, thank you for your time.
If there's any other, if there's any other feedback from the board, what I will say, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, as we, you know, look at next year's budget process, looking, you know, late August, September, sometime in that timeframe, as we work on the zoning coordinates coming up in June, as we work on the stream credits and so forth, the economic development strategic plan, a lot going on early summer, midsummer, but then that late summer, early fall, before we get into that budget process, we can bring some things back, have another session with the board, just get your feedback as board, how, you know, you all would like to go through next year's budget process with, you know, whether it's Mr. Quinn's thoughts and ideas, or some of your other ideas as a board.
Mr. Willow, I would just add one thing, if I may. I would really like for us to try to work towards a less condensed period of time. It was nothing but crunch time from January on, and this is too important of a process. You know, I just, I don't want the board so squeezed that, you know, with these deadlines, and I know we've got a statutory deadline, but we well, we're well in front of that. But I know this year was different with billings and different tax rates. But I would just like to see a more relaxed opportunity to do the budget work itself.
Jim?
I just have a question about this board's authority, as far as the input that we have is, when it comes to the school's budget. I, I mean, over the years, I've been told that we have no input. I've been told that basically, it's our job to appropriate, and it's their job to spend. So, you know, I would like some clarification to whether we have the actual authority to do what Mr. Quinn's asking. I don't say that it's a bad idea, but I'm not sure we can. So, I'd like some clarification as to what we can and can't do.
Yeah, and so, can I just clarify one thing? I was really talking about the overall budget amount, because I know we can't control how the money is spent by category. However, there could be an interactive discussion with them, where we talked about the impact of a cut. And is that going to prevent you from doing Phase Two of your compensation program? I think that's a fair question. But I do believe there's some restrictions, and I wasn't trying to violate those restrictions. I would want to stay within the rules, for sure.
And Chris, I do, to follow that up a little bit, with the adopted state budget, and with school funding, apparently is better than we expected. So, my question, you probably know where I'm going with it, better than we expected, are they still justified closing to elementary school?
That I could not answer for you, Mr. Tatum, in terms of, you know, the justification or what the numbers may be. The final DOE numbers, even though the state budget has been adopted, the final DOE numbers have not been released back to the schools. I do understand, in just some general conversations with the schools, and I don't want to speak on behalf of the schools, that with the potential of additional state dollars, Mr. Quinn asked about the Phase Two of that compensation plan, I do think that that works favorably in the schools' favor, being redundant, works in that area to help support that. I can't, but I don't want to speak and say that it will and does, because until those final numbers are back from the state, we won't know that. But from an encouragement, from the revenue standpoint, from that standpoint, yes. But to answer your question, Mr. Tatum, I couldn't answer that, not knowing the final numbers.
Well, and Mr. Tatum, I know that part of the money that's coming is going to be more, you know, SOQ related to at-risk populations. That's been articulated very specifically. But, you know, I think the question we've got to find out is, of the monies that are coming, what are restricted and what's non-restricted? And that will be key to understanding what their operating budget pressures are going to be.
Anybody else?
I'll just make one comment, and to Dan's point, I see what you're saying on being more involved in it. And I believe every board member here has a choice on how deep they want to be in, and where they want to go. And to your point about the schools, having a conversation with them, there's not a Department one that you, if you go to and say, if I cut this money, everyone will go act like, not act like, they're going to say, well, oh, gosh, that'll be, you know. And that's where I lean on Chris and their staff to be the middleman on that, say, yeah, well, here's what we want, we want to do this. And I think every time we have these conversations, Chris is sitting there looking back and forth, and when he sees there's a consensus, it does make a move. But I lean on them to make those decisions, to say, well, you know, yeah, we had this conversation about this, had this conversation on that, and they kind of divvied. Because I, if we go, if we talk to someone, of course, we say, well, if we cut your budget by $500,000, oh, gosh, 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 gosh. And that's where I leave it in their hands. That's just my point.
Nick, I would just add a step, though, that we missed. When we reduced the tax rate, and that equated to a $2-million reduction, the county came back and said, this is what we have to cut. They gave us a list of things they'd have to cut. And if we had really winced at one of those items, there was a chance for us to say, wow, I don't want to cut that one, we have to cut something else, or what, you know, what are we going to do? I don't, and so we had a chance with the school, we didn't have that chance. The school didn't come back to us and say, well, if you cut me by a million dollars, this is the impact. We owe the school that hearing, that public hearing to us. What's the impact of this cut to you? We didn't get that feedback.
That's a good point.
Mr. Chairman, that's all the items I have today.
All right, thank you. Other matters, my supervisors, Tim, you got to go.
Yeah, I'll make mine quick. I just want to follow up on what Chris said earlier, just to remind everyone, June 1st is the Henry Road Yard Sale Event. And I found out, just by a post on Facebook, it's also the Snow Creek Road Yard Sale Event. So, if you want to take a day and hit all the yard sales, from Henry County Line to Pin Hook on Snow Creek, you can hit the yard sales there. And from 220 to Route 40 on Henry Road, you can hit the yard sales there. So, just invite everyone to come on out and see a little piece of God's country.
That's great.
We'll even let you come, Lori.
You'll let me come?
Yes.
Gee, thanks.
You got to wear your hat.
With the tag.
I will wear my hat with the tag on it, yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
I just have one thing. I had a citizen reach out to me down on Truvine Roads, they've, they're having an issue with essentially a gang of wild dogs that have taken up, and apparently, several of the neighbors have reached out to Animal Control, and I don't know that they're getting what they need. I would ask that somebody from Animal Control reach out to me, and we try and get that resolved.
Sure. Take care.
I generally save mine, I generally save mine till last.
Okay.
But since Kevin's here, I wanted to do an update on mine with the county fair. So, Kevin, if you'll come forward, I'll start it off, and if I run into a question or something, I'll return it over to you. But I've got two or three things that I want to talk about. I know that in the past, we've had discussion, we've had good discussion, and everybody, all the supervisors are in favor 100% of the fair. And then, when we had our fair meeting last night, there was a couple of things that were brought up that we need, we, the fair committee needs a little help on. And I've got them listed, and this is where, if I get out of place that Kevin, I'll need your help. One is, one of them is, I understand that there is a grant available through the Farm Bureau for sound equipment. And this can become, this can become the county's equipment. And we need that at, not only for the fairground, but for Parks and Rec. And I don't know, I don't know the particulars of the, when it was told to us, they didn't know the particulars, but Monica with the fair, she knows something about that. And we've asked her to check into that, and if the county staff, I think Steve, you do most of the grant writing, don't you? Or maybe Brandy does, or whomever, and we can get some help.
Brandy's your grant writer.
Okay, and if we can get some help with that, we don't know if it's a matching grant or anything. Kevin, you go ahead.
So, a little bit of clarification, it's a $10,000 grant that has no match requirement to it. It's a very open-ended grant, it has to be agriculture-related. The Franklin County High School FFA was awarded the grant last year for $10,000. That's what they use to get their mobile ag classroom. And a couple of other local fairs have received funding for everything from cattle pens to PA equipment. So, if we're interested in further seeking that out, one of the things that was brought up last night would be some sort of either permanent or temporary public address system for, not only for safety, but also to announce when events were happening, and to be used for the livestock show, which is going to be on Saturday. So, that was one of the aspects that we could use, and I guess, if that's something we want to look for. And Dr. Washburn, with the high school, said that she would assist us, being a recipient last year, she would assist us in writing that grant on behalf of the county, or with the county. If that's something we were interested in going after.
Well, another thing that I thought about after we left, after we left that, guys have a good evening, be safe. The other thing that I thought about after we left is that it might be some monies through the tobacco grant as well, because that deals with education, things of that nature. So, it could possibly be something there. And then, another update, and this was already, these were already purchased from the budgets from Parks and Rec, and from Kevin's. The benches were, well, how many did you say, 40?
So, we'll have 14 15-foot benches that will be utilized for the fair, but we were able to work with Parks and Recreation. And those benches will be used for the four days of the fair, but for the rest of the year, that equates to seven benches for our soccer fields at Wade Park. So, there will be a multi-use set of benches, because as of right now, at Wade Park, the kids kind of have to either sit on the ground, or they have to go and sit with their parents. So, kind of get a double use out of these benches for the fair, as well as for our youth athletics.
The benches, the, going out, the input that we got when people were leaving, it was for the handicap going down. You know the road that goes from where you come in the entrance, and you go down to the pavilion, to the back where the steam machine, steam machine is in the building? Was talking about and hoping that there's money in the Parks and Rec's budget, as well as some of Kevin's budget, that we can pave that, because it's hard for wheelchairs to get down through there. It's my understanding that Parks and Rec goes in there and sweeps those loose gravel up, because the handicapped, the wheelchairs are getting, you know what I'm talking about, and it's getting into that. And then, maybe fixing it like a street, you know, with some lights, with some lighting down through there, and that. So, there's where we're at with that. And then, they've already, you remember back in January, they said there was no water? I said, well, there is water. But what it meant, what they meant, it wasn't that there was no water, it meant that it wasn't enough water there. That when the fair comes in, they put what they call a bib on the water spigot, and it'll take like seven or eight hoses, and it goes out. But it wasn't enough for the livestock and everything. So, now, there's been several other, I don't know, I don't know the number, you may even know the number.
Six. There are six water access points around the workshop.
So, there, there's, that's already been installed, Parks and Rec's already took care of that, and that's a done deal. There's been several trees cut that were in the way, several trees, which has made it bigger and handier, handier for the midway to come in. Now, there's some discretion going on right now with midway, but Kevin is taking care of all of that. So, that will be done. And then, one other thing is, we need another building. And that tree's been cut, and the lot's already damp, and there can be another building put up right beside the one we got. And it does not have to have a floor in it, it needs to be left without a floor. And that's the house, the livestock, because, you know, the livestock's going to do their business, and it'll just soak up in the ground. So, that's there. And there's a couple of things in effect right now, that maybe the Farm Bureau potentially can build a building, not saying that, and the county can contribute to it, but it will be just like the buildings that were there for the antique farm days. Whatever's done belongs to the county. And but, they, no way of knowing the particulars on that right now. There's a couple of things talked about, and that will come later. Don't even know if it can be done between now and fairtime, but potentially. But anyway, that's just an update on the fair. If there's anything that I left out, Kevin, that we need to talk about, or you want to say?
Yep, I think you covered it.
So, anyway, that's where we stand. It's going well with vendors, it's going well... So anyway, that, that's where we stand. Uh, it's going well with vendors. It's going well with sponsors. If you have anybody that you think wants to be a sponsor, uh, please let Kevin know. It's different. Packages, I guess is the proper word, on how much you want to donate or, or spend for the packaging you can actually get a place if you want to, uh, there are some limits, uh, what you can and can't do, but they will be there, those, those are them packages, if you want to be there. Yes, yes.
Chairman, you was talking about the building and the timeframe of it. Uh, where does it stand? I mean, y'all looking at anything? You got any plans or anything like that? Have you talked to anybody?
It's supposed to go on to Price.
I'm sorry?
It's supposed to go on to Haven Price.
Okay. So he's working on a price?
Jason was going to talk to him.
Okay.
He had some questions. I hope they can be answered. Today, it's an agricultural building. But because it's on the county property, there's a couple of things that are there. Uh, I talked to John this morning, but I didn't talk to him about that. But John brought in the building inspector, but that's been worked on. And when the, the list of questions get together, I'll give them back to everybody.
With regard to that, Mr. Chairman, um, I guess a couple of things are running through my mind. Are you, um, hoping that, um, the Farm Bureau will purchase the building?
I, I'm, I'm thinking, what, what we're talking about, what, what the preliminary plan is, they said the Farm Bureau will be the, uh, purchase the building or put it up or whatever, with the county contributing some monies to it, so we can do without the procurement process. That, that might make it a faster project. And, uh, but the procurement will be there for the money on what it is. I don't know that, uh, it's, it's very preliminary stages right now.
Yeah, because I understood that there-
I can't answer, I can't really answer your question.
Okay.
We're just trying to get some thoughts-
Okay.
On what it's going to cost and what, what can and can't be done.
Because I thought there were some, uh, there was an individual on the fair committee that was tasked with developing and researching for that very structure.
That is, that's who we're talking about.
Who?
It's Jason.
No. Um, anyway, and I don't know if that's part of what we talked about before, Kevin, with, we had talked about the need for master, you know, doing some type of master plan for the fair. And I don't know if you feel like you've got direction to do that, um, or not. But, um, I was under the assumption that this individual that was taxed with, you know, looking into that structure and whatever else, was that was going to be part perhaps of looking forward into next year and part of the master plan. Am I getting that wrong?
I think at the last update that we give, and Chris can maybe help me out here, um, the consensus was to pick this back up in September, um, with that three, five, ten-year outlook, based upon the mission statement and goals that we did establish, uh, the last time that I was here to talk about the fair. Um, so I think the, um, I hate to use the word assumption, would be that, that would be something that would be picked up in September.
So now we're going to try to put this building up before the fair?
I think, uh, the, uh, horse before the horse now on this. It's, uh, I'm just picking up on this, that, uh, we're jumping ahead there on that. And we don't need to jump ahead on anything. We need to keep it within the purview and the guidelines of what's already been established. So, uh, maybe we just need to, uh, kick that, kick that can to the side for the time being. Maybe we got ahead of, ahead of ourselves in these fair meetings on that. If that's, if that, if that be the case.
I was just seeking some guidance, Kevin, um, just based on my knowledge and my understanding of feedback and all from where the group's headed.
You're correct.
Okay, thank you.
One thing too, I don't, you know, I'm maybe getting down in the weeds with this, but if we're going to put up a building and definitely be used for, uh, the cattle show and all, uh, I, I assume we'd use some temporary pens instead of permanent pens. And, and where we could go back and use that building later on for something else, I don't know how it's going to fit in with, uh, Farm Bureau's plan or the money, but definitely if the county contributes money to it, that would be, uh, I'd say it needs to be done, you know? I don't know how to work that out between the two, you know, but.
They were already talking, I remember, I, I know that from our la, not last night, but from before, was they were talking about they could get some panels, and could get panels, because they could take them in and out, move them around if they needed them, and they had a trailer, or could get a trailer to store them in, because they got to be stored somewhere. I mean, that, that old house over there that we were talking about, be a good place to do it. But, yeah, I thought, I think that, uh, that the fair committee was getting ahead of, anyway, with that building and everything. Okay. Yeah, but that, that's what that is, was temporary panels, because, you know, cows, you need bigger, sheep, you need smaller, things that, I mean, these are not wild animals. These, these are animals that are used to being handled. They're not like our cows were. Might knock you down or something, you know, they, they, uh, they're used to being handled and let around like, like dogs and stuff. Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you.
And I only have one other thing on mine, so while I got it, I'll just do that. I only have one other thing on mine. The, at one time, there was talk of extending the water line on one sixteen. And maybe to the Windy Gap School. Where are we at with that?
Mr. Chairman, um, what I will-
I've had a couple inquiries.
Um, what I will tell you, and, and you said the water line extension to Windy Gap School, was that?
I thought, I thought at one time that that had been discussed.
Maybe along one sixteen?
Yeah, along one sixteen, a couple.
Um, I know, you know, with the water, uh, service area there, with the Water Authority in, in Burn Chimney, uh, what I will tell you, uh, and that was, should have mentioned this in my update, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, um, uh, Mike McAvoy with the West Virginia Water Authority and Shirley Holland, uh, they are scheduled to be with us here at the June eighteenth meeting to give an overview of their plans. You know, they do that about every year to really look comprehensive. I think it'd be a good opportunity certainly for the board to get an update, then also our new board members to hear from the Water Authority. And so, Mr. Chairman, uh, what I'll do, I'll reach out specifically on your question, uh, regarding that, and make sure that they, uh, come prepared maybe to, to talk about that in that service area.
Thank you. All right, who's, who's next? Mr. Carter, you said you had a lot of stuff.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I saved up because I didn't have anything last time. First of all, I, I would like to congratulate Brian Carter and the county staff on that bond rating. I think that's tremendous. Uh, shows a lot of hard work and diligence on your all's part, and I really, I appreciate that. It's going to mean a whole lot for the county. Uh, I'd like for the board to be aware that the DSS crew, Tony and staff were recognized in Richmond by the Governor of Virginia and the Commissioner for their increased efficiencies, cost-cutting, and excellence in the entire state. And I think cadews go out to them for that. Uh, I had a follow-up from a previous board meeting. The Internet Service for Interfaith Fellowship Ministries, Mr. Tony, did we follow up on that? And they get that straightened out? Okay, great. Uh, lastly, I want to discuss a little bit about the progress of Mountain Valley Pipeline. And I know there's been a lot of articles in the Friday pack. It's nine years and seven months of this project, fouled water, wells, springs, sedimentation, huge cost overrun, steel pipe from Japur, India, that's been exposed for years beyond its shelf life on the coatings. May eleventh, the state cited them with thirteen cases of non-compliance concerning erosion and sedimentation, which affects our watershed and Smith Mountain Lake. May twelfth, there was a rupture on Bent Mountain, which was documented in the Runup Times. Uh, May thirteenth, Montgomery County sent out a letter to ask, uh, that permission not be granted to allow MVP into service at this time. Twenty-three Virginia legislators have weighed in on this, including our representative, Morgan Griffith, asking for denial at this point. Uh, Virginia officials have urged Forest to stop or delay MVP. This was reported by the Virginia Mercury, with seventy possible flaws in that pipeline. We have thirty miles of that in our county. Morgan Griffith said, and I quote, "MVP has given the impression that all is well with the project. Despite this, the sudden failure of one pipe is a, is an alarming development. I believe the full pipeline should be tested before there's any discussion of placing it into service," unquote. And that's our representative. The Pipeline Hazardous Materials Safety Administration, MVP has not met the requirements of their safety agreement with this organization, and now is not the time for FERC to grant permission to operate. Thirty miles in Franklin County, what I'm requesting, Runup County and these other counties have sent a letter to FERC, and I would like for our board and our county to also send a similar letter at this time to protect our citizens and all these people that are on the route of this thing in our county. And Runup County sent this, and they're probably the least affected of any of the counties around us.
Mr. Chairman, I would, I, I agree with Mike. We, this is something, we're getting so many complaints. We've had people coming in here talking about it. Interruption was a, a pill on me, so.
Yeah.
Don't slow down. So I, I, I think it'd be very wise to do it.
And where that rupture occurred for the newborn members, Adney Gap, that's a very rural section of Franklin County. It's very inaccessible. There's very little water there to fight a fire. Uh, one of the studies showed if there was a catastrophic failure in that area, it could burn for twenty-four hours. There could be structure fires as well as a major forest fire. We do not have the capabilities to fight something like that.
I have no problem with this at all. But y'all?
No, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Carter, thank you for bringing this to the board's attention. I'm in full support of this. I have said from the very beginning that, um, previous boards, I think, have chosen not to touch MVP issues. Um, but at this point, and given the timing, I have been concerned about our citizens' properties in Franklin County. And, and the fact that, um, I, I worry about their protections. Um, and knowing that these pipes have laid out, open, exposed for years, um, every square inch of pipe needs to be inspected and tested. And if we can have a voice as a, as a government body to this extent, I one hundred percent support this.
Thank you.
So I, I'll just weigh in as a contrarian again, I guess, but, um, so I worked for Mobile Oil for twenty-two years and directly managed hundreds of miles of pipeline for them, uh, transporting petroleum products. And so I just, I happen to technically know a lot about pipelines. And I did some research on this one to better understand what they're doing. And so a lot of the techniques that I used over twenty years ago are still in force today. And I, I have a lot of confidence in the testing that's going on, so I'll, I'll just share some of the information. I don't mind the board sending a letter, but I, I think it's better to have a, a better foundation of understanding. So a couple of things I'd mention. First of all, all of the testing currently is with water. And they're testing at between a hundred and twenty-five percent and a hundred and fifty percent of normal operating pressure. So they're putting a lot of pressure in the pipe. And it did fail, but that's the purpose of the test, is to find these failures. And this particular failure was in, um, a, a piece of pipe that's prefabbed at a factory. Um, so it wasn't at a welded joint in the pipe or even in the pipe itself. They, they call these, um, I'm trying to remember the name. It's, it's a prefab. That's the best description, is a prefab. The, the test, so the, one of the tests that they're doing now is water pressure, again, at a hundred and twenty-five to a hundred and fifty percent of pressure. But they also use a system called PIGs. And this is an old technology that we use to test our pipelines. And you can do two, the, a PIG is a unit that runs through the pipeline, and it does two things for you. It gives you a visual inspection of the inside of the pipe, not the outside. But it is able to do a three sixty, uh, measurement of the corrosion in the pipe. So you get a reading from the entire length of that pipe, corrosion readings. And so that, uh, PIG system is, is an incredible, I mean, I haven't seen it in the paper at all, but I know they're doing that, and I confirmed in my research and my discussions with them that they're using, uh, these PIGs both for visual plus integrity checks. And then the last thing that I'd add is that they have, as with any pipeline, uh, uh, along the way, there are pressure drop detectors that work instantaneously to shut down the pipeline. So if, if they detect a pressure drop, it instantly, um, throws a valve that stops the pressure. So, so there would be a leak, but it would be momentary, as opposed to just gas spewing out because of these automatic detection devices. And so I just wanted to bring that up, and because of my research, and I, I'm such a supporter of, of transporting hazardous materials in pipelines rather than trucks, everything can have a failure, but pipelines are such a much better way to transport, um, hazardous materials in trucks. I, I'm supporting to get this pipeline up and running as fast as possible. So I, I don't mind if the board sends a letter, but I wouldn't want to sign it based on what I know about the pipeline.
I'll, I'll make one comment as a follow-up to that. In Franklin County, the emergency cutoff valves are ten miles apart. So depending on where the rupture occurs, you've got ten miles worth of that gas to burn off. And the engineers stated at various meetings, that could take twenty-four hours for that to occur. And as far as those PIG launchers, there's none in the thirty-mile section of Franklin County. I don't know how far they can run those PIGs, but there's no intakes or outtakes in Franklin County for a PIG launcher.
So the, the PIG launcher is both to put a PIG in and to take the PIG out. And so there very well might not be one in Franklin County, uh, but the whole line can be tested with the PIGs.
Yeah, see, I, I wasn't aware of that. But regardless of all that, I think we owe this to the citizens affected on this route.
I think there's a consensus to get a letter.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you all for your consideration.
For that information.
And thank the staff for my birthday card recently, too. I appreciate that.
Yes. Got anything?
A while back, I, me and Steve had spoke about, I think where the, uh, emergency services building are now in this lease, there was extra room there. And a member of the Electoral Board, she asked about looking, finding a spot. I think right now they were stowed, at that time, they were stored over at Johnny Smith Building in the basement. Right.
Yes, all the election equipment is on the bottom floor of the-
They still are there now?
Yes, sir.
Okay. She was asking if we could, if the county could find a place more suitable. Said it was down in the basement. Uh, the only restroom you had was to go outside, come back around, go up your steps and, and find it up there, and if it was a rainy day, that was a problem. So if, uh, we're going to lose that lease now, I understand, right, very soon?
Um, yes, yes, sir. Um, and Mr. Jamison, i- i- if I may, I, I did have an opportunity to meet with Kay, Chip Wood, the registrar, recently. The IT Director and I met on cybersecurity reasons and so forth, and actually met with the Electoral Board. So we had the conversation of actually, I haven't actually been to, uh, the storage area, but I know exactly what you're talking about. It's on the west campus of the high school, the basement area. I think Ms. Rossers knows that area very, very well, and so it's been on my to-do list to actually get with Ms. Rosser and to go see that space, to see if there are other opportunities for, 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 um, the concerns there regarding the tight quarters of that space.
I haven't seen it for years. We, we did a lot of work for Virginia Apparel, but I remember it, and it ain't a good sight from what I remember.
Yes, sir.
So, uh, you know, maybe something the staff or, you know, we need to look at.
Look into that and follow up if that, if that will help.
Thank you.
Ms. Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of quick things. Um, you know that we discussed, it came up, I think, Tuesday briefly, that, um, I was asking the county attorney, um, to look into, uh, researching and providing some guidance to the board on consideration of a first and second reading in our board meetings for certain items. As an example, things perhaps that come up that require funding or that need funding that are outside of the budget. Um, so, um, I have sent, uh, Mr. Glenn an email, um, and I have, uh, just as a follow-up to our conversation, um, I've asked him if he would provide some guidance to the board for our consideration, um, in, in picking that matter up. The other thing, um, Mr. Whitlow and, um, Mr. Carter, um, getting ahead of things, and we talked about budget earlier, I really want us to develop a process to allocate money to other agencies in our budget process. in our budget process. In Waynesboro, where I came from, I was part of developing a formula for that so that our monies are not arbitrarily allocated and that there's a screening process and that we can defend who we're giving money to and for how much. But I would really like to see a process implemented for our '25-'26 budget. The only other thing I have, Mr. Chairman, I think we need to pick back up at the appropriate time, discussion on CTE, especially with the fact that I think some alternative discussions have occurred, given things that have transpired during budget, and I just don't want to lose any momentum at deciding where this board wishes to be, you know, in lieu of school closings, budgetary issues we've had. I think that we've got enough time and energy and money actually invested with the architectural firm that we need to, we need to have this discussion at some point in the near future, if it's the board's will. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Quinn? So, I had a couple of things I wanted to mention. So, Chris, the first one's for you, and I was, as I listened to Stephanie talk about having the meetings for the comprehensive plan, and she was a little disappointed in the people that came or didn't come, and there had been a number of events like that where constituents come to me and say, "Well, I didn't know about this," or, you know, like, "Nobody told me about this." And you saw in Stephanie's slide, she had 12 ways of communicating it, so it is not a fault of the county. But what I was gonna suggest is that we might, if there was almost like a hot folder you could drop things into where we would get texts that, for example, I could put on a Facebook post, and I don't mean all events, because you would swamp me electronically, I would need two computers, but I mean, like, the comprehensive plan review, you know, there's, "Hey, would you please help us?" Right? Because I'm communicating with 600 people now. I mean, it's enough, I can really make a difference for you, you know? And so, those things where you're pondering, wow, is there one more communication channel? Stephanie had 10, could we be 11? You know, is there an easy way to just say, "Hey, board members, can you help me get this information out?" And it would be on things that are urgent for you, you know, where you really want public participation, not other things. So, that was one comment. The second was, I volunteered at the Jakes event last Saturday. It was up at the recreational park, and I'm just, I'm not asking for anything, I'm just supporting us doing that event. It's such an amazing event for kids. I was there from 9:00 to 3:00, 30 stations. It was supposed to rain, so that cut it down. Last year, 170 kids came, and I taught archery, and these kids are showing up. This is their only chance to do these outdoor skills, the only chance. They're fishing, and they're using a slingshot, and there's a BB station and an archery station, and it just, I mean, you can't bring more joy to watch these kids in action, and it's one event, and we're doing so much with it. So, it's just encouraging, like, keep doing the same thing is all, that's my message to you. It's just amazing. So, the next thing I wanted to bring up was, tonight unfortunately is the first farmer's market in Union Hall, and so I just wanted to tell the board that we had formed a Union Hall Village Working Group. One of the items they wanted to talk about was a farmer's market. Last year, a bunch of, several people did a lot of research on these. They went to farmer's markets, they talked to farmers, they were students about farmer's markets, but they couldn't find a piece of property. So, I took it upon myself this year to go around Union Hall, I found a piece of property, I talked to Lisa Lewis at VDOT and Lisa Cooper with the county, and very much to their credit, both of them, and I told Chris this and Steve yesterday, they could have pressed the easy button and said, "No." But instead, it was, wow, how can we get this done? This is an amazing thing. How do we get this done? Not the easy button is no, and both of them gave us conditions for how we could operate to get this done, the permits and all, and pay the fee, so we did everything that we needed to. And after we got the property and these permits and agreement to do it, six or seven people from the working group got together, they've been working frantically, so there's so many little things. There's insurance and buying T-shirts and a vendor agreement, and a not-for, I mean, it goes on and on, and they're doing all the work, and there are 35 vendors that are interested in participating. Now, with the rain today, I'm not sure how many showed up, but they're coming with their tents and their goods, and I'm just hoping, but the community is so excited about this. Something's happening, right? We've seen 15 years of businesses leaving, and now there's a farmer's market. It's something, so it's awesome. Then the last thing I have, at the last meeting, I talked a little bit about this church in Union Hall. I found out, and a couple of the board members recommended that I go back and see if there's anything of historic significance about the church, and so that set me off on yet another research project. And I called the Virginia Department of Historic Resources. I found out there's three regions in the county. One region covers Franklin County. I found the director for Franklin County. I called him about the church. Coincidentally, there was a survey done last year, a grant-funded survey, where they looked at buildings that were not on the registry that might have some historic significance, and this church was one of them. And so, there's a four-page survey available for the church, and they know that it was built like in the early 1900s, and they know a lot of history. They have a complete building description, all that information is in the survey. But most importantly, he has an application process. It's called a PIF. It's Preliminary Information Form, and he recommended that we complete that application for this church. And if the application is approved by his organization, it will enable the people that are working on this to get grant funding, both to purchase the property from the county, but also to do the historical preservation of this. And so, that's very interesting, and based on his review of the survey, and he's seen a lot of these before, he said you would get a lot of points for this building to get a grant. So, he was very encouraging to us to submit this application. And so, they will review these applications as they come in. He was willing to work with me. I talked to Steve about us taking the lead on completing the application rather than tasking the county with that, and so we did that, and I think that was a good thing because it required, I ended up doing a lot of interviews with people to understand what happened, who shot John, and recorded that. I went through an iterative process with this DHR Director where I submitted it, and the first time, he said, "It's not good enough." And so, well, I had to go back and get more information, but I finally got to the point yesterday, he said, "The application has enough information." And so, that was awesome, and so for him to say that means if it comes in, it'll be approved. It does require the county to sign it. The county has to sign it as the landowner, but it's not obligating the county to do anything, and it's not blocking the kick for the county to do anything. So, it's just a signing saying, yes, this story about what has happened in the past with this church seems to be accurate from the best of our knowledge. And so, I wanted to get a board consensus to task the county with reviewing this application, and then to come back at the next meeting as one of the consent items that they would be able to sign it. And then the last thing I wanted to mention on this church also, so in, this is, I mentioned this a tiny bit at the last meeting, but in the land records, it says it's 1.2 acres, and I just took that as gospel, but I ended up doing more research on that, well, because when I looked at the plat, it's a triangle, and there's a triangle right next to it that's much smaller, that was .8 acres, and I realized, oh, something's wrong here. So, anyway, I called Cornerstone, and they had surveyed the adjoining property, and he said, "I'll look into this and get back to you," and he did, and it's actually .51 acres. So, instead of being 1.2 acres, it's half an acre. And I learned through Margaret and Steve that if we have property and there has not been a survey done, it's an estimate. And what I learned in this case is the estimate doesn't necessarily even have to be close. The real amount is 40% of the actual amount, and so these acreages can vary dramatically if a survey wasn't done. So, anyway, that, so my ask out of this is for us to be able to task the county with reviewing the survey, which is largely complete. I still have to include pictures, and I have to give them two base map pictures of what this looks like on a base map, but the hard work is done at this point, and it's an electronic copy, you can edit it as you please, and then just come back as a consent item next time.
Anyone else?
Would you have to survey the land? Is the county gonna have to survey? Is that what you're asking?
No, no, the county, they would simply sign this, but that is one of the things, I'm glad you brought that up, Marshall. It's one of the things I pondered, because I said, wow, you know, if the, and now I'm thinking about other properties, not the church property, but say we have a piece of property, and we know it's not one acre, it's a half an acre, is it okay to sell that property to somebody with that kind of known air? And I talked to Jim Gwynn, and he said, "It is okay. It's like buyer beware, caviar impure. It's okay to do it." It was kind of surprising to me.
Well, yes, that's what it is.
However, what I would say about that, so for these properties that we want to sell where they haven't had a survey, so the acreage is really in question, a kid coming out of college with GIS skills can simply go on a base map, they can put their points in, and within five minutes, they'll know the acreage to within a hundredth of an acre. And so, I think that it would be prudent upon us for those properties that do not have a survey to do that GIS measurement, because it's free. It's a staffer that does it on a computer as opposed to spending, and I did get an estimate for the church property, it'd be $1,000, and so you could do it for free and at least know, like, in this case, you might reduce and say, "Okay, it's a half an acre, or it's .55," but at least you're a lot closer than 1.2 acres.
I understand, but then if you do it, we got a piece of property, and, you know, we're gonna look and sell it, says five acres. All right, we do the thing, and it's four acres, but still can't go on a deed till it's surveyed. Is that right? Am I confused?
That's, I believe that's correct.
When it goes to sale, we'd say, hey, you know, we did our math, and it's four acres, but, you know, it's five acres more or less on a deed, the way it reads, right? Unless we do an actual survey and pay for it, we can't change that deed.
That's my understanding, based on a conversation with Margaret, is she cannot change the official records until she has a survey done. So, in this case, even though you do the GIS measurement and you know it's a half an acre, you still can't change it until a survey's done. That's my understanding from her, and Chris, you could say if it's different.
I think it has to be a survey, because that has to be recorded in the clerk's office. And so, we don't, we don't, in my opinion, we don't need to be putting more money in something we're trying to get rid of. If you want to get, if you want to buy it and then do a survey, then you're doing it.
Yeah.
If, what you were talking about, the free thing, that's up to you if you want to do that, but, you know, you're selling it as is. That's why when you get a, every survey plat I've ever seen, it says plus or minus. That's why it's in there, because it's not an absolute science.
I've seen that too, but I never realized it could be plus 100% or minus 50%. I've seen that too. I just didn't realize the variance it could be in there.
I heard that number one time, you know, plus or minus, I think it's three acres, isn't it? I don't know, I'm not gonna say that for sure, but I heard that figure one time. A surveyor told me that that's what, it was there, but that's why that's on everything. It's plus or minus, and, you know, they try to pick a reference point. We had to do that when we did fatalities in law enforcement, you had to pick a reference point that was pretty much not gonna move. But, and what in the world is that gonna be? Couldn't be a tree, because a tree could be cut down and stuff like that. But anyway, your point's well taken.
Mr. Chairman, I would support Mr. Quinn's request to have this on the consent agenda and have staff review all the body of work that's been done, and just for verification purposes so that this application can be submitted.
I have no problem with that. Anybody else? Okay.
Great.
Thank you. Anything else? We didn't miss anything. Well, we thank each and every one of you for being here, for your interest in county government. The weekend coming up, Memorial Day, for any of the veterans here, thank you for your service. Be sure to thank a vet for their help. I'm not sure how many vets are in the building, in here, but thank you from me and from this board, they're shaking their head. We are standing at recess until June 18th at 3 o'clock.